Okay, good evening ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us this evening. The City Council reconvened from closed session and I would like to adjourn the closed session at 6:11. Oops, before we do that, let me report out. During the closed session by vote of four zero, Councilman Detrick being absent, the City Council authorized the City Manager's office to initiate litigation in one matter. The name of defendants and details are not subject to disclosure at this time. Once litigation is filed, this information will be disclosed to any person upon inquiry. And let's go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 6:12. Want a call to order the regular City Council meeting to order at 6:12?
I think if we can, it looks like the mics are muted, yeah. If we can get a check.
Hello? Mic? Nope, can't hear.
Mic could stay on and then test just one if we all turn on our mics. I'm gonna get a lot of feedback so everybody can...
Testing, 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 testing. Testing, testing. Nope. Testing. Testing, testing.
I'll turn on my mic if you want to turn yours off. I'll do test, test, one, two, three, four. Test, test, one, two, three, four. Test, test, City of Elk Grove and that sounds like we're live. Thank you back room.
Okay, testing, testing, alright.
So Mr. Mayor, can you reread the report of the closed session? I'm not sure if people heard that.
Okay, for the report out by vote of four zero, Councilman Detrick being absent, the City Council authorized the City Attorney's Office to initiate litigation in one matter. The name of the defendants and details are not subject to disclosure at this time. Once litigation is filed, this information will be disclosed to any person upon inquiry. And we've adjourned the closed session already. Let's call to order the regular City Council meeting on Wednesday, May the 8th at 6:13 PM. Mr. Clerk, if you can read the Metro replay schedule?
Thank you Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, May 10th at 1:00 PM and Sunday, May 12th at 6:00 PM. It is being closed captioned. It will be webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the council for more than three minutes. Speaker timer on the podium counts down the individual speaker time remaining and will turn yellow after the first two minutes have passed indicating one minute remains to summarize comments. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete a speaker card, the blue cards that can be found at the back of the room and provide to the Assistant City Clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. Thank you Mayor.
Okay, roll call please.
For the roll call, Councilmember Winn?
Here.
Councilmember Detrick is absent. Councilmember Suwen?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hume?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
I am here. And a pledge of allegiance, I'd like to, since we just had the Western Festival, I'd like to invite Ken to come on up and lead us in the pledge. Come on up sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at the beginning of every regularly scheduled City Council meeting, the Council would like to invite members of the public to join us in a moment of silence. So if you could, please join us. Thank you very much. And I have an agenda in front of me. Move approval? Got a motion second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention? Next item.
We have no items under Section 3. The closed session will take us to Section 4, Presentations and Announcements, starting with item 4.1, a proclamation recognizing May 19th to 25th, 2019 as National Public Works Week.
Thank you. Good evening Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Bob Murdock, Public Works Director. Every May I get the opportunity to stand up here and talk about public works and National Public Works Week, which this year is between May 19th and 25th. It gives me the opportunity to do two things. Number one, to recognize and thank my staff for all the terrific work they do and promote Big Truck Day. This year, Big Truck Day will be on May 22nd from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Laguna Reserve Marketplace. That's on the southwest corner of Bruceville and Whitelock. It's the location, the event was held last year. Last year, we had a great turnout, a little over 3,000 kids attended. This year, it's gonna actually be bigger and better than ever. We anticipate even more kids showing up. It's really geared toward young kids that can get out there, climb up on construction equipment, and have a lot of fun. So we encourage everybody to show up again 11:00 to 4:00 PM on May 22nd. And also, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank my staff. Don't get the opportunity to do that very often. Tonight, you're gonna see, you're gonna hear a presentation on a Capitol program. I really want to point out the fact that that group has made tremendous improvement in the number of projects they've been able to get out onto the street and award. Couple of years ago, we did about 15 projects. This fiscal year, we're gonna do about 30. So we've about doubled what we've been doing in the past. That's slowly grown from 15 to 17 to 28 last year to 30. So we're continuing to improve that. Operations and maintenance, you're also gonna hear tonight that all the efficiencies we've been able to gain in operations and maintenance, we've been able to put millions of dollars more into pavement, far more than probably anybody anticipates. I'm gonna let my staff get the credit and tell you how much later, but I think you'll be surprised at how much more we're gonna put into pavement maintenance every year over the next five years. Transit, I want to recognize them for going through, you know, a tough year. They're transitioning, they're gonna go toward a contract with Regional Transit that might ultimately turn into an annexation, and they've been just professional and terrific through the whole time. And I fully expect them to continue that. They're just a great staff and I want to thank them for that. And integrated ways for everything they do. SWAC is five years old. We've had 77,000 cars show up and over $3 million of hazardous material taken off the street. So they continue a great job. And Fleeton Facilities, Facilities is facing a big challenge. On the scroll, there was the Aquatic Center they're gonna have to be involved with, the Commons, Community Centers coming, Animal Shelter's coming. So I just want to thank them for everything they do. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to do that and I appreciate it and thank you.
Thank you for being so gracious and recognizing the hard work of your staff.
Thank you Bob, appreciate it. Alright, next item.
Take us to item 4.2, a presentation by the Sacramento Yolo Mosquito and Vector Control District with a presentation by General Manager Gary Goodman.
Alright, good afternoon. Thank you very much for the opportunity and invitation to come out again to talk a little bit about mosquito control, what we're anticipating for this upcoming season, and some of the tips and tools that we want people to utilize to try to help reduce mosquito production and of course, virus transmission over the course of the season. So my name's Gary Goodman, I'm the district manager. Of course, our district is located right off of Bond Road in Elk Grove. We also have an office in Woodland that covers all of Yolo County. So our district, again, all of Sacramento and all of Yolo County, it's quite diverse from the perspective of, we have a lot of population in Sacramento County, 1.4 million, and then right on the other side of the river, we have quite a number of rural entities and specifically things like rice fields and wetlands that produce a lot of mosquitoes that then have an impact on our residents per se. So we also have to deal with issues such as things in the Delta where you have tidal influence that can produce a significant amount of mosquitoes as well. So for us, what we do on a daily basis are looking for specific mosquito habitats, looking for where mosquitoes are breeding. And so mosquitoes breed in water and wherever there's a water and vegetation interface is where you're really going to find mosquito production. And so there are some things that are very easy for us to spot, large bodies of water, rice fields, wetlands, those types of things. But one of the bigger challenges that we have really are some of the backyard sources. What's in your backyard specifically? And especially in the springtime when we have those recent rains, a lot of these types of things fill up with water and then start to produce mosquitoes. And so one of the things that we ask the public to do is to try to go around their yard once a week and make sure that they're reducing any standing water that might be in their backyard, especially with now that we're gonna start turning on sprinklers to get our grass, our lawns going and our drip lines, all of those other things. So anything that can hold water for about a week or so can produce mosquitoes and so we want people to go around their yards once a week and dump any potential standing water. But this is always a big challenge for us because it's difficult for us to know what is in someone's backyard unless we do an actual inspection on the property. We go through what we call an integrated mosquito management approach. The first one is public information. So we have a very active social media program, advertising program. We do radio, television, print ads. We go out to a lot of festivals. We were just at Western Festival here in Elk Grove, but we go out to a lot of events to try to just educate the public on what they can do to reduce mosquito production and then of course, protect themselves from mosquito breeding and mosquito bites and disease. Then we have a program, we call it our Surveillance Program. We set traps throughout the district, setting traps specifically looking for and collecting different species of mosquitoes. So in our district, we have about 24 different species of mosquitoes. Not all mosquitoes transmit disease, but we're trying to figure out what are the populations doing at any particular point in time? Are they rising? Are they falling? Are we starting to see more production in a particular neighborhood so that we can then mobilize our troops to go out and look for those mosquito breeding sources? And of course, we do virus surveillance for that. So we bring those mosquitoes back to our laboratory here in Elk Grove. We count every single mosquito, we speciate them and sort them by sex because only female mosquitoes bite, male mosquitoes only feed on nectar. And so then we test those mosquitoes to see if they're carrying virus so that we know if there's a particular issue in a neighborhood. Then we have our biological control program. If you've ever driven by our facility there on Bond Road, you'll see all the ponds out there. We breed mosquito fish. They're about two inch long fish, look similar to guppies. And we are probably the largest mosquito fish breeding facility in the country. We plant about 4,000 pounds of fish throughout the district in places like rice fields, wetlands, irrigation ditches, horse troughs, but of course, even backyard swimming pools that are not being maintained. They do an excellent job of taking care of the mosquito population from that. And we provide these fish free of charge. So if you have a source where you think that these might be helpful, give us a call, we'll come out and visit it and plant those fish if they're going to survive there. Then we have an ecological management department. Specifically, we have some heavy equipment, backhoe and dump truck, and we actually work with landowners to be able to try to reduce mosquito production on their property by laser leveling. We work very closely with US Fish and Wildlife Service at Stone Lakes, also with California Fish and Wildlife in the bypass, so areas where you're starting to get landowners that are producing mosquitoes on their property and what are the things that they can do, we offer those services as well. And then of course, we go into what our chemical control is. So the majority of the work that we do is looking for mosquito breeding in water and then treating that in the water itself. But we also advance also to adult mosquito control. So once we start to see populations rise and/or of course, virus activity, then we need to try to control the adults. And that includes anywhere from backpack to truck to, and even in the past, we've done airplane over town. But we do a lot of chemical control or a lot of aerial applications in our rice field areas or wetland areas where the majority of the mosquitoes are being bred. So why are we doing this? Well specifically, we're here, there was the, in California, the Mosquito Abatement Act that was founded back in 1915. And so we've been in business here within Sacramento and Yolo County for over 80 years. But specifically, we're looking to try to control disease and protect public health from mosquito borne diseases. West Nile virus is the most prevalent disease that we have and it's a bird disease, it's actually carried by birds. It's transmitted by mosquitoes. So a mosquito bites an infected bird, picks it up and then bites another bird, passes it on, or bites a human and pass it on. So West Nile virus for us is not going to go away. We have the right mix of both birds and mosquitoes here in the Sacramento Valley. And so we're always going to have West Nile virus in our area and want people to know that they, what they can do to try to protect themselves. But mosquitoes also transmit dengue, malaria, chikungunya, Zika was in the news a few years ago, but even also dog heartworm is one that we're starting to see in our particular area and specifically at this time of the year because the specific species that transmits dog heartworm breeds in tree holes. And so when you have those recent spring rains, they fill up those tree holes, those mosquitoes come out and you start to get transmission of dog heartworm. So in general, this was West Nile virus activity in California. Last year, we had a sharp reduction throughout California in terms of the number of human cases, 218 from 536 the previous year. One thing I want to try to stress here though is that West Nile cases actually go significantly underreported because typically, symptoms are flu-like symptoms. And so people that get the flu may not ever go to the doctor and get diagnosed for West Nile. And so about 70% of these reported cases are what we call the more serious neuroinvasive form of the disease, requiring hospitalization, leading to paralysis, blindness, and of course, even death. So we want people to be aware, it is a very significant disease, but CDC estimates that for every neuroinvasive form of the disease, you have anywhere from 30 to 70 other people that are impacted by West Nile and just goes underreported. So you're really talking about tens of thousands of people in California that are impacted by West Nile and the diseases and the symptoms that they cause. So here's a map of the City of Elk Grove and the activity that we had last year. The red circles are West Nile virus positive mosquito samples that we collected. So this is setting a trap, collecting a mosquito, and then bringing it back and finding it positive for virus. The yellow triangles are where we found dead birds that tested positive for the virus. So as you can see, we had quite a bit of activity in terms of West Nile virus throughout Elk Grove last year. We're hoping to have a little bit less activity this year. It's a bit counterintuitive in terms of what we're anticipating for, West Nile virus is because it is a bird disease, we are kind of out of a drought now. So we had our worst years when there was a drought, which is a little counterintuitive from the perspective of, oh, if we have less water, we should have less mosquitoes. And while that's true, what happens is because it's a bird disease, wherever you do have water, you have a congregation of both birds and mosquitoes in the same place and it tends to amplify the virus. So now that we have more water around, we'll probably have a higher population of mosquitoes but may actually have less virus activity. And that's what we saw last year. So we're hoping that that trend will continue again this year. So what are we anticipating for 2019? Again, with the amount of rain that we've had, there are a lot of water sources that are out there. Our folks have been very busy trying to find and track and treat sources already so that our populations can be reduced, but now we're starting to get that warmer weather and of course, we need the public's help in being able to try to find and identify both mosquito problems around their yard and dumping at any standing water that they may have in their backyard. We are also concerned about what we're calling invasive species of mosquitoes. So the two mosquitoes on the bottom are called 80's Aegypti and 80's Albupictus. These are very efficient vectors of dengue, Zika, and chikungunya, which are exotic diseases that we've never really had here in California. And these particular species of mosquitoes have never really been in this part of California, but they're starting to make their way up. And so there are established populations in Southern California and there are established populations in areas such as Madera, which is only an hour and a half away from here, so very similar climate. So if we get these level, these species of mosquitoes established in our area, then we could have local transmission of more exotic diseases and that's what we're trying to prevent. So to date, we've yet to find these, but we're continuing to look throughout our surveillance program. So what do we ask the general public to do? We have what we call seven D's. So make sure you're draining any standing water, looking around your yard once a week as your sprinklers fill up any containers, just dump those out. Make sure that you're not breeding in your own property. Dawn and dusk are times to avoid being outdoors, that's when mosquitoes are most active and they're looking for our blood meal. So as I mentioned, only female mosquitoes bite and they're looking for the protein in your blood so they can develop their eggs and lay their eggs. So if you can avoid being out at dawn and dusk when mosquitoes are most active, then you'll reduce your risk of transmission or getting bitten by mosquitoes. If you do have to go outside, dress in long sleeves. I know it's hard in the middle of summertime to dress in long sleeves, but if you can't do that, use a repellent. So I think the council knows, we buy the repellent packets by the pallet. We want it to be used. We offered some up at the Western Festival and any events that you may have, movies in the park or any of those types of things, all you have to do is give us a call, we'll be more than happy to provide that free of charge. So even residents can come to our, come to our office and ask for repellent, we'll be more than happy to give it to them. Defend yourself again with a good repellent. Doors and screens should be in good working order. So at nighttime, we like to open up and get that delta breeze that comes through. If you have holes in your screens, mosquitoes pick up the carbon dioxide that you exhale. So in the evening time, they can find their way in. So make sure that if you're opening up your windows, that your doors and screens are in good working condition. And then the last D is district personnel are here to help. So if you know if somebody has a bad pool, if you see standing water, if you just see mosquitoes around your property, give us a call. We typically come out within 24 hours, sometimes even same day. We want to make sure that we're taking care of the problem as quickly as we possibly can so that we don't have those adult mosquitoes and then of course, transmission of West Nile and diseases like that. So you can get more information on our website at FightTheByte.net or give us a call, 1-800-429-1022. And that's the presentation that I have unless the council has any questions.
Any questions? Go ahead, council.
Quick question. Thank you for the information. I've always wondered, in terms of long sleeves, does it matter the thickness or can it just be something loose?
Something loose for the most part. I mean, as soon as mosquitoes land, they're kind of probing to figure out if they can get some blood there and if you've got any level of layer between you and your skin, then that's gonna be a better off. So I mean, if it's a tight fitting, you know, then that might be a bit more of a problem. So if it's thinner and tight fitting, then they're gonna think that they can get through that. And they can, they're pretty crafty. But if it's a loose fitting, that's what we tend to recommend for folks.
Right, thank you. Okay, any other questions?
Nope. Thank you.
The other thing I did want to highlight is your appointee to our board, Lynn Hawkins, is always a wealth of information, a lot of great ideas. I think he serves the city well and we're very happy and proud to have him on our Council on our board.
Awesome, thank you.
Great.
So we do have one member of the public sign up to speak. I'll go ahead and open for public comment and invite Mr. Michael Manasky to come on up.
So drain that standing water and fight the bite. Just two days ago, UN's Science Panel, the Intergovernmental Science Policy Platform on Biodiversity and Ecosystem Services announced a pending study that said around 1 million animal and plant species are now threatened with extinction, many within decades more than ever before in human history. The average abundance of native species in most major land-based habitats has fallen by at least 20%, mostly since 1900. More than 40% of amphibian species, almost 33% of reef-forming corals, and more than one-third of all marine mammals are threatened. The picture is less clear for insect species, but available evidence supports a tentative estimate of 10% being threatened. The Sacramento Yolo Mosquito Vector Control District is statutorily responsible for and empowered to maintain the public health by mitigating risks from insects carrying infectious diseases, as you've just heard. I believe that this agency oversteps its authority by using dangerous chemicals, namely organophosphate insecticides, which interfere with the transmission of impulses between nerves. Naled and malathion are relatively simple molecules that shut down the enzyme acetylcholinesterase, which recycles the neurotransmitter acetylcholine. As the neurotransmitter accumulates to higher concentrations at the nerve endings, mammals suffer what's called sludge syndrome, an acronym for the symptoms of this poison's effects: salivation, lacrimation, urination, defecation, gastric upset, and emesis, making the parasympathetic nervous system shut down the body. It's like eating a poisonous mushroom or being bitten by a snake. After aerosol spray in the real environment, Naled's half-life is 24 hours, but Malathion's half-life is up to two weeks. The organophosphate insecticides are cholinesterase inhibitors. They are highly toxic by all routes of exposure. Broadcasting neurotoxins from the sky instead of applying rational alternatives flies in the face of reason. The district and this council deserve our rebuke and collective condemnation for insisting upon the continued use of these dangerous antimetabolites which destroy many more species of insects and aquatic life than intended.
Thank you sir. And seeing that there are no additional speakers signed up, let's move to the next item.
Take us on to item 4.3, the Youth Commission Semiannual Update.
My name is Carrie Byerline, Administrative Analyst in the City Manager's Office. Tonight, we're giving our annual presentation for the Youth Commission. I wanted to point out that I'm really proud of this group. They've stepped above and beyond and just have tried to do events after events this year and just kind of, they really wanted to serve their community and so I just really am very proud of them. It's been a very productive year. I'd like to bid farewell to our seniors. We have five of them leaving, so we'll have five new commissioners next year. And thank you all for your support, as always. So I'm gonna turn it over to Natalia for introductions.
You all look taller even this year.
Good evening, City Council Members. I'm Natalia, this is my second year on the Youth Commission, my second and final year, and I'm the Chair.
Hi, I'm Matthew Jamomoy. I'm a senior at Franklin High School and this is my one and a quarter year on the Youth Commission.
My name is Madeline Bagwell and this is my third year on the Commission, going on fourth.
Good evening, my name's Hong Yu and this is my first and last year on the Commission.
Good evening, my name is Meide and this is my first year on the Commission and I'm Communications Officer.
Hi, my name is Adam and this is my first year on the Commission.
Good evening, my name is Pneet and this is my first and last year on the Commission and I'm Treasurer.
Hello, my name is Marion Simana and this is my fourth and last year on the Youth Commission and I'm Secretary.
So you may be asking, what is the Youth Commission? Well, we serve to represent, host, and attend to the needs of the teens of the City of Elk Grove and we strive to understand what's needed and what's desired and we want to be able to engage the teenagers of our community in the events that we create and be able to introduce them to other activities in CSD and within our district.
These are some of the events that we did in our 2018-2019 year. We had our summer retreat, Party at the Palms, our teen forum, Stronger Together, Shape Your Future, Love Your Community, and Family Fun Day.
On August 15th, we had our summer retreat, which is from 10 to 2. During the session, we had ice creatures to get to know each other and we also learned about the Code of Ethics, the Brown Act, and the duties of a Commissioner.
On September 8th, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, we had Party on the Palms, which was a teen-only event with carnival games and a game truck, foam pit, food trucks and snacks, and live music with a DJ.
On November 1st, we heard, we held our teen forum with the Consumer Services District Teen Action Committee. There, we were able to engage teens in civic duty by helping gather opinions on their desires on what they want to be done in the City of Elk Grove and Community Services District. Also, we had a night with nachos and popcorn.
On November 10th, 2018, our commission was proud and honored to host the very first Stronger Together event. We were unable to do this event last year to not enough volunteers, but we were so grateful to be able to present it this year. This event talked, discussed topics such as social pressures, bullying, and more internal issues. It also talked about stress, toxic relationships, depression, and suicide. We were lucky enough to have JJ's Foundation present and myself giving a speech for any teens struggling.
On the 19th of January, we had our Shape Your Future event where students were able to come and learn applicable life skills such as resume building, balancing budgets, and college preparation. Students were divided into groups and then shifted from one station to another, learning a new skill at each. And then afterwards, we had a career fair with different groups and companies coming and showing off possible careers that students could take in the future such as CSD and the Police Department.
So our Love Your Community Food Drive was held on February 12th, which was right near Valentine's Day, and it had an amazing turnout. We encouraged people from all over Elk Grove to donate non-perishable items and make Valentine's Day cards. In total, we collected over 700 items and made many Valentines for Elk Grove Food Bank.
Okay, so during one of our meetings, the Youth Commission had to decide whether or
not to support an Assembly Constitutional Amendment to lower the state voting age. ACA 8 would lower voting age to 17 instead of 18. The Youth Commission conducted a vote and a majority voted in favor of supporting the ACA 8.
On the 13th of April, we hosted our annual Family Fun Day Carnival, which is an event we cater towards the entire community instead of just teenagers. We offer carnival-style games for the younger kids, food trucks, and we had attractions such as face painting and a photo booth with several prizes for the little kids to redeem their tickets.
As our final and last project that we could offer for this city, we are hoping to announce a social media campaign to promote better ways to care for our city and make it beautiful. It is a campaign addressing small ways that we can help keep our city beautiful and healthy.
And since we have five commissioners this year who are graduating, we will now have five open
have five open vacancies for the Youth Commission for the next year. And applications can now be found at elkgrovecd.com.
I'd like to thank all members of the City Council at this time for your continued support of the Youth Commission throughout this past year, and I'd like to also thank you for allowing an opportunity like the Youth Commission to exist, because it's really meaningful for teenagers to have a platform for their voices in our own community. Thank you.
We have plaques to give the seniors. If you would like to come down and...
Awesome. Let's come on down. What do you want, Carrie? Okay, the first senior. Matthew. Where are you, Matthew? Come on out. Matthew, thank you so much. Next senior is Marion. Congratulations. Pinit?
Thank you.
Hong Yu? Natalia? All right, scoot on in. We want you guys up front. You're the stars.
Best of luck to all of you.
Yeah, good luck. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Good for you guys.
And thank you, Carrie, for your hard work. You're always leading these great group of kids.
You know, I was just going to say that I think this year's activity has been pretty extensive. So you guys kind of beefed it up this year, right? Well, thank you. Good job. All right, let's go to the next item.
Take us to Section 5, Public Comment.
Okay, Public Comment. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to remind you that please stick to the three minutes. As our clerk has reminded everyone, you have three minutes. At the two-minute mark, you have a yellow light warning you to ask you to sum it up. And the reason being is there's a lot of speakers. I want to say, I think I counted 40, and we want to hear from everyone, and we want everyone to have a chance to fairly present their issues to the City Council. That being the case, our first speaker is Bonnie Stensler. Oh, is it? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Michael Manasky is first.
I think it's, that was leftover from last time.
That leftover?
Okay, all right. Call up Miss Stensler.
So Bonnie Stensler. Following Bonnie is Ken Johnston.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. My name is Bonnie Stensler, and I'm here tonight with Regina Scott, Suman Singa, and Bill George, and also Eileen from the Elk Grove Food Bank. We're residents of Del Webb, the Glenbrook community, but we're here tonight on behalf of the Elk Grove Food Bank to promote the 15th Annual Run for Hunger. How many out there know what the Run for Hunger is? Have you heard about it? For those who aren't familiar, it's a 5K-10K run or walk, which will be held on Saturday, June 22nd, at the Elk Grove Regional Park. This is a great fun event for the entire family. It includes a flat course, live music, great food, including a free pancake breakfast, and lots of vendors. This run or walk, as I'm doing, benefits the Elk Grove Food Bank, which benefits approximately 5,700 individuals in the Elk Grove area every month.
Not working, Jason. Mine's off too. Yeah. It's off up here too, Jason.
Yep.
Testing?
Can't hear him.
Testing?
Test, test, test. Test, test. Seeing what we got in here. Test, test, test. Test, test, test. City of Elk Grove, technical difficulties with sound. Test, test, test. Test, one, two, three, four. Test, one, two, three, four. Thank you, audience, for your patience while we go through this. Our technical team in the back room, they've either checking and seeing if they can get this dialed back in. Test, one, two, three, four. Test, test, test. Test, one, two, three, four. Test, test, test. Test, one, two, three, four. City of Elk Grove, testing for technical difficulties. Test, test, one, two, three, four. Test, one, two, three, four. Might have to see if we have a bullhorn from the Police Department to carry on for the rest of the night, so hopefully not. We do have the recording going, so the meeting is being recorded. It'll pick up ambient sound. If we are to run into any issues, what we would ask, as the Attorney Hobbs noted, if folks can project and speak out loud, but hopefully what it is is just a technical issue, and they're testing out and hopefully switching some switches in the back. There is a lot of apparatus around here that is dependent on switching, so sometimes the switches... Test, test, one, two, three, four. How's everything going back there? Okay. They are getting it, because it is broadcasting out to our folks out there, so... But if we do shut the system down and then turn it back on, do they have an approximate time of how long that would take? A few minutes? I'd say it's worth it to try it out. We've got a lot of folks that want to have their voices heard. It's going to be hard if we don't have microphones operational tonight, so... Really appreciate everyone's patience. I think it'll just take us a few minutes. They're going to try and hit the infamous information technology secret, which is just turn the computer off and turn it back on again, and hopefully that will get us back online. Test, 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 test. Test, test, test. Yeah, we're not... Do you want me to just... But it's not coming out here. Yeah, that might be the best way.
So, Mayor and Council, apparently it's an issue. They can get the recording, but none of the microphones are working, and we're not getting the feed coming out. I think it might be picking up the recording, so that as we go, it's just some folks in here.
Okay, folks, let's get the show on the road. Hey, ladies and gentlemen, let's get the show on the road despite the technical difficulties. Mr. Clerk, if you could?
Yeah, I'll give the updates that I can. So thank you, everyone, for your patience. What we are dealing with is that there is no sound that's coming through into this room. So what's occurring is the microphones are actually picking up, and they are broadcasting out to the public. In fact, I probably sound way too loud out on the broadcast, so that recording is still going on. What we would ask is that for folks that are here, just to use a projecting voice, just dig down deep into that diaphragm and let it all out as we go. For folks, if you are having a hard time hearing any of our speakers, in our foyer, we actually do have a television set that is picking up and broadcasting the sound, and so you can view the meeting from inside the foyer and hear the sound that is going if you are having difficulty. One of the issues for us in this room is that if we do have ambient noise in the background, it is going to be difficult for any of us to hear, and so we would just ask for folks that you can do your best to try and keep any kind of sidebar conversations or keep it low so that we can focus on the speaker who has the floor, and we'll proceed as best we can. I would ask that for any staff in the council, your microphones are picking up the broadcast, so please do use them as you are speaking. Use the same habits and make sure the light's on when you are speaking so that it is picked up. We also do have assisted listening devices. We do not have that many for the whole room, so Krista has a few of our assisted listening devices. If you would like to have one, we can see what we can do. I'm also not sure, you might be able to pick up your cellphone and get our live feed and put an earbud set in and probably listen along. It'll just be on a little bit of a time delay. But we thank you for your patience. We've got a lot of folks here. We have, I have a wave from Mr. Becker in the back. The captioners are... Picking us up, so excellent. So we'll have the captions up so folks can follow along, and we thank you captioners for sticking with us through these technical difficulties. I'll turn the meeting back over to the mayor and I think our speaker. We have a reset timer, so...
Okay, if you can restore her time, and let's start again.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. My name is Bonnie Stensler, and I'm here tonight with Regina Scott, Suman Singa, Bill George, and Eileen from the Elk Grove Food Bank. We're residents of Del Webb, Glenbrook community. We're here tonight on behalf of the Elk Grove Food Bank to promote the 15th Annual Run for Hunger. That's a 5K-10K run or walk, which will be held on Saturday, June 22nd, at the Elk Grove Regional Park. This is a great fun event for the entire family. It includes a flat course, live music, great food, including a free pancake breakfast, and lots of vendors. This run or walk, as I'm doing, benefits the Elk Grove Food Bank, and the bank benefits approximately 5,700 individuals in Elk Grove area every month. We hope that those attending tonight's meeting or viewing tonight's council meeting will participate in this very worthy cause. At this time, I'd like to thank the council, our city manager, and other city officials who are already on board and supporting this race. You can register online at www.egrunforhunger.com. We will also leave some information in the lobby. Again, thank you. I'm very happy to be here, and we'd love to see you all on June 22nd.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Ken Johnston. Following Ken is Norm DeYoung.
Hello, this, I'm Ken Johnston with Elk Grove Western Festival, and Elk Grove Western Festival for 62 years has raised money for the schools.
Come on, Ken, I know you can talk louder than that.
We raised a lot of money this year for the schools. The Elk Grove Auto Mall gave away a car to deserving students. That was a lot of fun. They lined 10 cars up and gave every child a key. They went out, stuck it in the car, and only one started. Very happy. We also gave them free ride tickets to the carnival, so they got to ride all day free, all the deserving kids that didn't win the car. So we also raised money at the schools for different projects that they'd like to do. We also had a handicap day from 2:00 to 4:00 on Friday, where all the handicap kids got to ride the carnival rides free. Last time, you picked a guy for Outstanding Citizen. He does the parade for us. We have about 30 people who put the event on, and about 200 volunteers that come out and help us. Lyndon King here does the parade. He also picks up the poop afterwards. So that's a hell of a guy, right? That'll put on a parade and then clean up afterwards. Had a lot of, not a lot of entries, not a lot of horses left in Elk Grove, but the ones that were there were very quality, fine-looking horses. I'm a horse guy, so I enjoyed the horses. The car show was a huge success. Barbecue was outstanding. I ate real well that week. They seemed to like me when I go around and give all their kids free. They seemed to like me when I go around and give all their kids free carnival ride tickets. They sort of feed me as I go around, so I go around a couple of times, you know? So, it's cool. Had lots of vendors, had five new vendors. We upgraded the food, very quality. We had Rudy's Hideaway unit there, serving good quality food instead of just all corn dogs. Entertainment, we had three stages of entertainment. And we had, let's see, about 10 nonprofit organizations represented there. Had the gentleman before us talking about them showing there. There's a lot of nonprofits that get to show their action in the city there. So we feel it was a huge success. Everything was good. Only negative we had is there was no beer. So, everything was good and we'd like to thank you for your sponsorship and working with us to put this great event on for the community. Thank you.
Can we ask the council to join us down here so we can make a presentation?
Oh, there's a presentation, sure. Counsel?
An appreciation for the cities helping support the 62nd Annual Western Festival. We'd like to present some honorary slack for supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Norm DeYoung.
Nope.
All right, next speaker is Jason Stelling. Following Jason is Amrit Atwal.
I got a water ball here too, but I won't waste your time with that. Hi, my name's Jason Stelling. I'd like to say all the union guys here, hey, I've been a union guy for 31 years, been working as a union member 31 years. Nothing against the union people. The union people could have their jobs if you built this hospital in a different location. This location is the worst location in Elk Grove. Look yourself in the mirror, guys, and say to yourselves, is this the best place for a 400-bed hospital in Elk Grove? I don't think so, really, come on. And the kids with your styrofoam issue, keep going, Hannah. Good job.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Amrit Atwal. Following Amrit is Menroy Manalota.
Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. My name is Amrit Atwal. I attend Kasumnas Oaks High School as a freshman. Thank you for your time and allowing me to state the importance of banning the use of expanded polystyrene, which is also known as EPS or styrofoam. I would love the opportunity to explain to you the dangers to the environment, human health, and overall waste that is being generated through the use of EPS in Elk Grove. Most people love EPS because it is cheap, but EPS is harmful to our health and the environment. EPS could cause one of you to get sick. Did you know that school might get sick too? I know that we all love our families and we wouldn't want our families to get sick. We need to ban styrofoam. In closing, please allow my peers and those in this room from other high schools to present a formal presentation to you at your next council meeting on May 26th. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Menroy Manalota. If I mispronounced your name, please correct me. Come on up, come on up.
So, my name is Menraj Manaloto and I'm a ninth grader at Kasumnas Oaks High School. And I'm a member of the Kasumnas Oaks High School Environmental Club. Now, regarding expanded polystyrene, styrene residues are found in 100% of all samples of human fat tissue. Additionally, the exposure of styrene increases risk of leukemia and lymphoma. And on top of all that, styrene is a neurotoxin. So, please put our presentation about EPS on your agenda for your next meeting on May 22nd. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Maryam Nakayan. Following Maryam is Tyra Josie.
Mr. Mayor and council members, good evening. My name is Maryam Nakayan and I'm a freshman at Kasumnas Oaks High School. Thank you for allowing me to speak on a support for a ban to the use of EPS in Elk Grove. In this opportunity, I want to explain to you the dangers to the environment, human health, and overall waste that is being generated through the use of EPS in Elk Grove. EPS is destructive to our environment, undoubtedly damaging us as well. EPS takes from around 500 years to forever to biodegrade. With the buildup of EPS in our environment, people, animals, and plants can be negatively affected by this. Not to sound like a tree hugger, but according to the Washington Post, 1 million plant and animal species are on the verge of extinction. And 75% of the land environment and while more than half the marine environment have been altered by humans. The Great Pacific Garbage Patch, which is twice the size of Texas, containing pieces of broken-up styrofoam, is an example of the pollution created by us. Therefore, the more we contribute to this by using, not using products causing these problems such as EPS, the more we positively affect species as well as our health because we are in need of a healthy environment. Please give the environment, your outside home, your attention. So if you could be so kind as to take action to ban styrofoam, you in turn take action to save our one planet from turning into a dark, polluted, and unhealthy one. Please allow us to come and present at your next council meeting on May 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tyra Josie. Tyra? Tyra? Is that you? Come on up. Oh, back there, okay. Following Tyra is Amrita Kaler.
Hello, my name is Tyra Jose and I'm a junior at Elk Grove High School and part of our environmentalist club. I'm here to quickly discuss the ban of styrofoam in Elk Grove. I would love the opportunity for me and my fellow classmates to formally discuss it more in detail at the next city, at the next council meeting on May 22nd, but for now, I'll just say the big picture. Styrofoam is not degradable. It never degrades and it is continuously hurting the environment and ecosystems all around the world. Now, we have many alternatives and if Elk Grove is willing to look into these alternatives, why not? Styrofoam itself is completely unnatural and it doesn't belong on our planet. People don't mind using it because of its convenience, but if Elk Grove banned styrofoam and used a beneficial alternative, all of us would respect the environment more and it would encourage everyone to take that effort toward a healthier environment more seriously. All in all, it's a serious problem, but we have the potential to change that. As you have seen throughout this meeting, many of us deeply care about this, so thank you for your time and I hope to see you again May 22nd.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amrita Kaler. Following Amrita is Sharie Lankipali.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Amrita Kaler. I am currently a freshman at Kasumnas Oaks High School. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to inform you about the relevance of banning the use of expanded polystyrene, also known as EPS in Elk Grove. I would love the chance to tell you about the detrimental effects that are harming both the people and the environment from the use of EPS in Elk Grove. It is my conviction that we should ban the use of EPS because at our age, we are already witnessing the effects of climate change. By enforcing this ban, we will be one step closer to helping the world. Wouldn't you want to aid future generations to live in a better place? We have the potential to create a domino effect in which other cities and counties follow our movement and lead us into a brighter future. Ultimately, please grant my fellow peers and those in this room from other high schools to present at the next council meeting on May 22nd. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sharie Lankipali. Following Sharie is Brylee Meyer.
Hello, my name is Sharie Lankipali. I'm a student at Kasumnas Oaks High School. If given a chance to convey the effects of EPS, we can raise awareness throughout the city. Just because EPS is cheap and portable does not mean it's fine for the environment. In fact, it's quite the opposite. EPS takes decades to fully dissolve, which hurts the landfills around the planet, which in turn affects the environment. Should we not protect the earth for what it's given us and more? Restaurants that are in Elk Grove are harming the environment by using styrofoam for regular use. They use it for drinks, takeout boxes, dishes. We are aware that Elk Grove has entered an agreement with Dark Container, but we also know this contract can be easily dissolved. There are alternatives to styrofoam and if implemented soon enough, we can make the city a much more grand, vibrant, and proficient place. Thank you and please give our school and others an opportunity to convey on this matter on May 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Just saying before our next speaker, Mayor. For everyone out there, is it better with or without the slight reverb of the TV volume?
Without.
Without? Better without? Good try, thank you. Okay. All right. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Brylee Meyer. I'm a proud student at Kasumnas Oaks High School. Thank you for allowing me time to state my support for banning the use of EPS in Elk Grove. I would be happy to have the opportunity to explain to you the dangerous effects to the environment, human health, and overall waste that is being made from the use of EPS in Elk Grove. EPS is causing lots of health problems for the environment and the human race. We need to start making changes or else humans are going to have, start having health problems. If we start making changes now, other cities in our region could start following along and pollution could decrease. Gandhi once said, "The journey of a thousand miles begins with one step." Let's be that first step. Please make room for us on your agenda for your next council meeting on May 22nd. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So the next speaker, I'm gonna struggle with the pronunciation of your name, I'm gonna try though. Chisaram? Oxybogu? Is that close? Come correct me. Come correct me.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Chisaram Okibugu. I'm a freshman at Kasumnas Oaks High School. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak to you about the importance of considering an ordinance to ban the use of expanded polystyrene, or also known as styrofoam, in Elk Grove. I believe that styrofoam is causing many dangers, such as creating habitat dangers for animals, health hazards to humans, and environmental concerns for the earth. These factors continue to create a problem to all living things as well as being hidden from the eyes of the public. I strongly believe as we, as students and as a community, can change these conditions and furthermore create a healthier, better Elk Grove to offer all to come in the future. And please attend our next council meeting on May 22nd. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Matthew Cranny. Matthew Cranny. Come on up, Matthew.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Matthew Cranny. I'm a freshman at Kasumnas Oaks High School. I appreciate the time you're giving us to present the research we have against the harmful effects of EPS. When EPS is used, it creates hazards to our health, it increases the total waste, and it destroys the environment. According to BBC, over 1 million plant and animal species are now threatened with extinction. This is because we have increased the use of harmful materials such as styrofoam. Elk Grove is already a beautiful city and we want to keep it that way. As citizens of Elk Grove, we have a duty to preserve the environment. In closing, please allow my fellow classmates and peers to present to you the results of our research on May 22nd. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Louisa Brier. Louisa? Louisa? Come on up. Following Louisa is Eddie Partington.
Hello, everybody. Hope you guys are having a good evening. My name is Louisa and I'm from the environmentalist group at Elk Grove High School. I want to thank you for allowing me time to speak about the importance of banning styrofoam in Elk Grove. Styrofoam is non-biodegradable and we're producing tons of it. The styrofoam ends up in our streets, our rivers, and our oceans. When it breaks into small pieces, which is land and animal, animal and land aquatic animals eat it and it goes into their systems and they die, which then we consume the aquatic animals, which is a threat to our community. And so I hope you guys take in consideration of putting our, us on your agenda on May 22nd and to take in consideration of banning styrofoam in Elk Grove. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Eddie Partington. Following Eddie is Sumaya Lahemas.
Good evening. My name is Adele Partington and I'm a junior at Elk Grove High School. I'm also a member of the environmental club. Tonight, I would like to speak to you a little about the use of styrofoam in our city. As you all most likely know, styrofoam is not only frequently used in Elk Grove, but also worldwide. Last year, thousands and thousands of tons of styrofoam were produced and most of it was used for single-use products. At my school, styrofoam is used every day for slushy and frozen yogurt cups. At least 100 students use these cups every day and there is no way of disposing them except for throwing them in the trash. The trash either goes to get burned, which puts chemicals in the air, or to a body of water to get dumped into. Many students just throw their trash on the ground as well. In addition, outside of school, all of us in Elk Grove receive styrofoam in our packages and take it home with us in our box, in our to-go boxes. This is a huge issue. Styrofoam never biodegrades. We produce so much of it every year only to use it once. Most places that use styrofoam, like Elk Grove High School, buy styrofoam because it is cheap. But personally, I don't think one's desire to save money should be prioritized over the health of our city and our world. There are other options out there and if we make the change, maybe other cities around us will too. I hope that you take what I say and what my peers say into heart and add us to your agenda for May 22nd. Thank you.
Next speaker is Sumaya Lahemas.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Sumaya Lahemas and I'm the president of Elk Grove High's Environmental Club. Right now, we're working with CO and Franklin to try and get styrofoam banned from Elk Grove, as you've heard already. Now, a lot of people have talked about how bad styrofoam is for us, for the environment, and it's really, really true. The other day, I was cleaning up the American River and it was literally crazy how much styrofoam was on the shore and in the water. It breaks apart, it doesn't biodegrade, and it's going to be here for millions and millions of years. By the time we're dead, by the times our grandchildren are dead, styrofoam is still gonna be on the planet. Styrofoam we made 20 years ago is still gonna be on the planet. And it's hurting our environment, it's hurting us. There are toxins in there that cause cancer and we're just using it every day, putting it in the microwave, throwing it around like it's nothing. It's not nothing and we need to do something about it. So hopefully, by May 22nd, you'll put us on your agenda and let us talk to you about it more in detail and hopefully, we'll get it banned from this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Trina Lee. Trina Lee.
Hello, I live in Elk Grove and I teach in Elk Grove and I'm gonna use my teacher voice, so sorry, in the lobby, it might be a little loud. I'm here to support these students in their request that you hear them out on a styrofoam ban. I want to give you a little bit of history. I'm old enough to remember the 1980s when McDonald's packaged every single hamburger in styrofoam. There was a public outcry, environmentalists spoke up, and in 1990, McDonald's banned styrofoam. If it seems daunting, the idea of a city banning this product, I want you folks to know, the path has been cleared by many cities. Los Angeles, San Francisco, Washington DC, Portland, Oregon, Minneapolis, and even Davis, California. California, and most recently, the entire state of Maine has banned styrofoam. We adults are the custodians of these amazing young people's future. And let's be real, when it comes to the environment, we have been very, very poor custodians. When they come to us with their concerns and their solutions, the very least we can do is listen. So I urge you to listen to them on May twenty-second. Thank you.
Thank you. Trina? 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 Ms. Lee? Question, just a question for you. It was very inspiring to hear all these young people talk, but I was just wondering, until unless if that happens, a ban, has there been any effort or consideration of going into any of the local businesses, the to-go shop, restaurants, to ask them if they'd be willing to make a choice to not use styrofoam for their containers?
We have not done that. I know at Elk Grove, there's some, oh! It's Munson House. Some of our students have done that, so...
Ma'am, why don't we do this? Go ahead and answer the question, and you're slotted to speak, right? So why don't you just address that when you come up, okay?
So some of the Elk Grove students have been talking to our food services about working at the school and school district level.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Next speaker is Loretta Gonzalez. Following Loretta is Delaney Kingston.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak about the importance of banning styrofoam in Elk Grove. My name is Loretta Gonzalez, and I attend Elk Grove High School. Two weeks ago, our environmentalist club cleaned up the Sacramento River, and the amount of styrofoam along the trails made it clear, the dangers to the entire community, health, and waste in our city. We found a large block of styrofoam that took hours to find and pick up all the pieces that could potentially harm the wildlife in our area. Please allow my fellow classmates and other concerned schools in this room to present a formal presentation at your next council meeting on May twenty-second. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Delaney Kingston. Delaney Kingston. Following Delaney is Mark Graham.
Hello, I'm Delaney Kingston from Elk Grove High School, and I'm with the environmentalist club at my school. Thank you for letting me speak about the importance of banning styrofoam in Elk Grove. Styrofoam is a threat to our community and is an overall waste, which can be seen through my school's use of styrofoam, and how styrofoam pollutes the environment around us. I would greatly appreciate the opportunity to elaborate further on the dangers styrofoam is in Elk Grove. Please allow my fellow students and peers in this room to present you a formal presentation on May twenty-second. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Delaney. Next is Mark Graham. Mark Graham. Mr. Graham.
And just to note that Mr. Graham did submit a PowerPoint presentation to accompany his comments, and we'll pull that up. He did submit it within the twenty-four hour timeframe.
Following Mr. Graham is Lynn Wheat.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mark Graham. God, it's so weird with no sound. Okay. I sent you a proposed ordinance that would change the council's rules for public comments to allow a speaker to yield two minutes of his or her time to another speaker, and then yield a third minute back to the council. I'm asking you to put that on the agenda for May twenty-second. Also, I would like to have some time in Section Four to address the council on this subject we've been talking about for about a year plus. Also, I think you should grant them their request. That was truly encouraging. I was truly encouraged to hear all those students coming to talk to you about this environmental issue. That is awesome. That is our future, and I'm so glad, good job, all of you students and teachers. Let's see. Mr. Berman, I would like to have a phone call with you, or meeting if we could do that, one way or another. I sent you a list today of things I wanna talk about. Question for, well, it's a question from Mr. Hobbs, but I'll address it to you. In how many cases have you represented a city in the area of telecommunications law that we're talking about, in particular, the Telecommunications Act of nineteen-ninety-six? I'd just like to know, approximate number. Now, the city's new webpage on 5G still does not solicit the input of your residents. Of course, you don't have to do anything I'm asking you to do, but how about this? Would a council member please explain to me and to us why you've chosen not to solicit the input of city residents on 5G? I think that you're, when you were doing the general plan update, your website encouraged and asked for people's input, so why not do it on this? You know it will affect everybody in the city. Leadership is stepping up in answering these tough questions. Next thing, June eleventh, Tuesday night, from six-thirty to eight-thirty PM, right here, we will have a health information event about electromagnetic fields, what they are, what they do to the body, how to measure and shield them, and how to reduce your exposure. Everybody's invited, June eleventh, six-thirty to eight-thirty, right here. Also, oh, haha. People that promote 5G and the Internet of Things say, "Well, why do we need it?" Well, we have to have driverless cars. We have to have autonomous vehicles. And the Internet of Things, which I think is the Internet of Dumb Things, do you think that there's any chance that those driverless cars could break down? The city doesn't even have sound tonight. Consider that. Technology is not perfect. Okay. These are some of the recommendations that we've made before. I went back and watched the presentation that Mr. Hobbs gave November twenty-eighth at the community workshop, and I thought he made some good suggestions. And how I would evaluate them, here, this is a list of things a city can do. And on top of this, you can set a preference list, an order of preference for the locations of a cell antenna. And for each one, I would, here's a decision rule that I'm recommending the council use. If there are cases from the US Court of Appeals from the Ninth Circuit that say that you cannot do one of these things, then don't do it. Or from the Supreme Court.
I'm sorry, Mr. Graham, your three minutes is up.
And you should do it.
Yeah, thank you.
Protect us. Thank you.
Next speaker is Lynn Wheat. Following Lynn Wheat is Vince Bernachi.
I left my water at home tonight. Item A of your closed-session agenda lists prices and terms negotiations for the Rite Aid site at Elk Grove Boulevard and Waterman. By my recollection, this is the second time this property has been discussed in closed session, and nothing has been reported. Yet, according to the website loop.net, this site is no longer on the market. So this really makes me wonder why there is nothing for the city to report. Also, a quick search of the Internet shows that there's currently a liquidation of furnishings at that location. On a related note, I attended the Elk Grove Water Board meeting a couple weeks ago, and their closed-session agenda lists price and terms negotiations for our library in Old Town. So assuming negotiations are two-way communications, I'm wondering, when is this building going to show up on the city's closed-agenda session? Finally, I'm at a loss of where the policy guidance is on some of these real estate transactions. I guess it first started with the purchase of a hundred acres outside the city limits for the MLS soccer team. Where was the policy direction for that? Then there is those dilapidated brick buildings along Railroad Avenue that will suck a lot of money to rehab, like the library. The library took over a million for us to rehab so it could become a library. So where is the policy to buy Rite Aid? And furthermore, I'm curious. I went to the LAFCO meeting last week where our, where it was approved for us to receive all the acreage that's outside our current city limits for our soccer complex, and what I heard that night was the city's considering seventy acres beyond the hundred acres for the county fair. So is our city going to purchase more land? Even though I also heard that we'll do the soccer in stages, and it might not be what we originally envisioned because of the cost. So I'd like us to have some open conversation and some transparency around us as taxpayers becoming landlords. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wheat. Our next speaker is Vince Bernachi. Following Vince is Glenn Snyder.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Vince Bernachi. I'm an owner of a Sacramento-based company, construction company, Shetter Electric, and I'm here to lend my voice to the support of the California North State University Hospital project. In my mind, support of this project is the proverbial no-brainer, given the benefit the city and the region's gonna receive as a result of this project. I understand to be twenty-four thousand jobs, four-hundred million a year of an economic impact. So it seems to me that that's the right thing to do, and I urge you to support the project as well, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Glenn Snyder. Following Glenn is Brian Holloway.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Glenn Snyder. I represent sheet metal workers, Local 104, members in the area. I had an apprentice and his wife that were here, but they had to go pick up their kids. They wanted to speak in favor of this project also, it was Tommy Harris and his wife Jennifer. We feel that this is gonna be a good project. It's gonna create opportunities for apprentices, our members that are working out of town to come back home and do work here in the community. So we urge you to support this project when it comes before you, and make those opportunities for our members who live here locally to have jobs here at home. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Brian Holloway. Brian Holloway.
Brian.
Come on up. Following Brian is Troy Aronson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I think this is where the reverb is coming from. I'm Brian Holloway, and I represent the California North State University Medical Center and Teaching Hospital. You've probably noticed that we've stayed on the sidelines as we refine Elk Grove's first hospital, but we feel it's time for us to speak up and speak about how important this hospital is to Elk Grove. We also wanted you to know firsthand that we've reactivated our outreach to both our residential neighbors and our retail commercial neighbors. We've asked, and we've been listening to both, and as a good example of that, we've already modified the hospital plans to relocate the dormitory, as was suggested by our neighbors. And we've asked to meet again with Nest again, and we're gonna do that at their convenience. We've re-engaged our retail tenant neighbors by actively negotiating with them and making offers to them to relocate them elsewhere on, near the property at better locations or similar locations, and paying their relocation costs to do that. And in order to keep them close by and thriving. We've established an informational website, CNUhealth.com, with downloadable fact sheets so that we can have an additional way to keep the community and our neighbors engaged and informed. We've also seen, as you've seen tonight, and you will see tonight, there have been community organizations and individuals that have offered their support for the hospital, and many of them have chosen to come tonight to speak at once, to express their views. Elk Grove is growing, and it's coming of age, and it needs and it deserves its own hospital. Thank you very much for your time. I'm not sure if you can ask questions during this period, but if you can, more than willing to answer any.
Thank you, Brian. Next speaker is Troy Aronson. Following Troy is Michael Martinez.
Good evening, Mayor Lee. Councilman, Vice Mayor.
My name is Troy Aronson. I represent the Iron Workers Local 118 out of Sacramento. We approximately have over a hundred members that live in the Elk Grove area, and we're in support of the North State University Hospital project. As you know, most of our members wake up at three o'clock in the morning, drive to the Bay Area to work. This would be a great opportunity for our apprentices and our members that live in the area to work locally, and I think it'll be a great asset for the city of Elk Grove. So I just wanna let you know that our locals in favor of the North State University did come to Elk Grove. So thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
All right, thank you. Michael Martinez. That's our next speaker. Following Michael Martinez is Houston Charles.
My name is Michael Martinez. I'm a fourth-year apprentice with Local 104. I'm for the hospital. Locally, I have worked on jobs here in town, which is great. Currently working out of town, which is a pain for my family. My wife is also a medical assistant, working on being a nurse locally, so it would be great to be for the hospital. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Houston Charles.
Houston Charles.
Good evening, council. My name is Houston Charles. I'm with Local 104. I'm a first-year apprentice. I just ask that you guys support this hospital, as it would bring jobs closer to home for us that are in the local, that are working out of town, and it brings our work closer to home. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Noah Painter. Noah Painter.
Huh?
Come on up. Following Noah is Jim Baldridge.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Noah Painter. I'm here on behalf of IBW Local 340. We're in full support of the proposed CNU hospital. Thank you.
Jim is our next speaker. Mr. Baldridge. Following Jim is Gurjatinder Randhawa.
Good evening, Jim Baldridge, operating engineers, business agent, Local 3. We came tonight in support of the hospital project. Thank you.
Okay. Gurjatinder Randhawa. Following Gurjatinder is Doyle Radford.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Gurjatinder Randhawa, and I am a longtime resident of Elk Grove. I live in Kastlay Ranch area with my family. I support the California North State University Hospital proposal. My family and I have used emergency services in Kaiser South Sacramento many times. Reducing the travel time to the ER from thirty minutes to a few minutes is a matter of life and death. It's that simple. This is a community benefit project. A handful of opponents should not decide the fate of something that benefits the entire community. The hospital will also bring great jobs to the town and use the facility for many opportunities. It is a very low-traffic area. Bringing a new hospital into the area would give someone a new life. Please support this hospital. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Doyle Radford. Mr. Radford.
Present.
Coming up, Mr. Radford. Following Doyle is Chris Griny.
Hey, good evening, Mayor Lee, respected council. My name's Doyle Radford Jr., and I represent the hard-working men and women of construction and general laborers, Local 185. I'm here tonight on their behalf to express our concern and our support for the California North State University Hospital. I thought about having a few dozen of them show up and speak, but in respect to your time, I'm here on their behalf. So we thank you for your time, and we appreciate the support.
Thank you, sir. Chris Griny. Following Chris is Dave Connor.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, staff. My name is Chris Griny, with the Heat Frost Insulators and Allied Workers, Local 16. Here in support of the California North State University Hospital project and the jobs and career training it will provide. I look forward to the wonderful opportunities for career training for residents of the city of Elk Grove. We have members in Elk Grove, but looking forward to train some new people into the building trades, but also look forward to the innovative training that it will have through the hospital community as well. So thank you. Encourage you to support the project. Thank you.
Dave Connor is our next speaker. Following Dave is Anna Elisna.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thanks for your time. My name is David Connor. I am the CEO of Recon Nexus Industry Association that represents the commercial real estate and construction industry on a regional basis. I'm here to voice our member's support of the California North State University's medical complex. Also, as a resident of Elk Grove myself, and a father of two very active teenagers, I feel, we feel that the additional access to healthcare is a much-needed and much-desired amenity to Elk Grove, and will have a huge positive impact on our community. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anna Alisna. Following Anna is Dave Gross.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. My name is Anna Alisna. I'm here on behalf of the Sacramento Asian Pacific Chamber of Commerce, and we support the California North State University Medical Center. We believe that it is an important investment into a world-class health care facility in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Gross. Following Dave is Andrew Assure.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Dave Gross. I'm representing Valley Communications, Local IBW Technology Contractor, and we are in support of the CNU Hospital Project. Thanks.
Thank you. Andrew Assure. Following Andrew is Daniel. Andrew, come on up, please.
Andrew had to step out. My name's Daniel Lowndes, and I appreciate you guys having us. I am the chair of an organization called Region Technology, and I just wanted to give my support from a regional standpoint, how important this hospital can be, and what an opportunity Elk Grove has to demonstrate leadership in bringing a hospital like this to our region. So I look forward to your support of that.
Thank you, Daniel. Forrest Johnson. Following Forrest is Kevin Ferrera.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and Vice Mayor Hume. My name is Forrest Johnson, and I'm a Public Affairs Coordinator for Region Builders, a construction and building industry, a trade association of region business. The Region Builders Board of Directors supports the CNU Medical Center, which will ensure economic growth, create more jobs, and provide accessible health care for the citizens of Elk Grove. Thank you for your time, and have a wonderful evening.
Kevin Ferrera. Following Kevin Ferrera is Matt Morrow.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council members. Kevin Ferrera, Executive Director of the Sacramento Sierra Building and Construction Trades Council. We urge the council to fully support this project. It is the biggest thing to help this city, and the economic development is gonna be, you know, untapped from what's gonna happen with, that comes around this hospital. So we urge your support for this hospital. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Matt Morrow. Following Matt Morrow is Norm DeYoung.
Good evening. I'm here with Region Builders to support the CNU Center. Thank you.
Norm DeYoung. Following Norm is Mark Doty.
Your Honor, members of the City Council. I'm Norm DeYoung. I'm here to speak on behalf of California North State University's proposal to build a hospital in Elk Grove. A hospital that will have a first-class trauma center, emergency care at our disposal. From Waterman Road to Harbor Point, there's a pretty long ways. And if you're in any one of those extremes, you'd want a hospital right in the middle. But right now, we don't have a hospital in the middle. In fact, I don't even think Methodist is gonna build their hospital that they said they're gonna build. So much for human kindness. We need this hospital. This hospital is going to be able to treat emergencies that come up too many times. When you have an emergency at home, it takes roughly 60 seconds to identify the emergency, get on the phone, make contact with an operator. That operator has to ask you a bunch of questions before that operator can act. That's about another minute. She presses a button to dispatch. That dispatch takes another two or three minutes. By the time the ambulance gets there, or whatever the vehicle is, gets there, four or five to 10 minutes have elapsed. By the time you get to the entry room of the emergency hospital you're going to, somewhere between 10 and 30 minutes can elapse. That is very dangerous. That is very, very dangerous. We need to have a trauma center in our city. And I would submit to you that many of the people that are against this project simply haven't gotten sick recently.
Our next speaker is Mark Doty. Following Mark Doty is Kathy Engel.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Hume, and council members. Mark Doty, I'm on your Trails Committee, for those that don't know me. I wanted to thank the high schoolers that were here today with the, I just walked in, I was a little late from, coming from the high school myself, and saw them petitioning their government for change, and I think that's pretty fantastic, being on the Trails Committee. I'm an advocate for bicycling, walking, et cetera. Today was Bike to School Day. I hope all these high schoolers that are here in the environmental group rode their bikes to school today instead of hitching a ride with mom and dad. But I digress. Anyway, I just always wanna push that. Getting cars off the road is a huge environmental impact, so I hope these high schoolers are with me on that. So, and then I wanted to, I'm gonna talk later about the CIP later on the agenda, but I know it's a hot topic, the CNU hospital, and I just wanted to let people know that in the coming weeks, I believe, it looks like May 20th, CNU is gonna be on the Trails Committee agenda to look at, obviously, we're only looking at things that are within our peer view, which is, you know, accessing the facility via typically non-vehicular transportation, so biking, walking, et cetera. So I invite anyone that's interested in the project, obviously, there's a lot of interest in the project, to come out to our Trails Committee meeting when it's on the agenda. It's supposed to be on the 20th, it could get pushed back, but check the agenda once it's actually out. I just wanted to just invite the public out to that, 'cause that's how you, you know, that's how the process within the city, right? Nothing's been approved, and, you know, everybody's talking here tonight in support of it. At this point, you don't even have a project to support or not support, right? It has to go through Planning Commission, or go through all your committees first, and then go through Planning Commission, then to you guys. So, you know, at this point, there's just a, there's a proposal, but nothing to actually vote on for you on the dais. So I just wanted to remind everybody that, you know, how government works, where, you know, you guys are still reviewing it and not making a decision, and part of the process is committees looking at it. So we're not gonna look at everything in regards to the project, but things that are within our peer view, we'll take a look at, and the applicant will be there, and city staff will be there, and anyone from the public that wants to come, we usually meet right in here. So anyway, thank you.
Mark, I got a question. I should've asked this before we had the Trails Committee update at the last meeting.
Sorry, I wasn't here.
I know in other cities that they'll spray paint, like a bikeway or recommended bike route on the road so that people, when they're riding.
Like sherros.
What's that?
Like, they call those sherros.
Yeah, sherros.
And we have those, like, in Old Town Elk Grove.
Yeah, down in San Diego, it's called the PB Bike Path. But anyway, have you, has your committee thought about doing that here in Elk Grove so that people?
Yeah, and we have them in various spots. When you did the widening of the turn lane at Laguna Boulevard and Franklin, there's some sherros that are directing people around that area, 'cause the bike lane kinda gets pinched down and kinda doesn't exist by the jack-on-the-box there on Laguna Boulevard. Anyway, so staff is all over that, I mean.
Cool.
Staff, do you have input?
Yeah. They're good.
Totally off-topic, but since you're standing in front of me.
Yeah, no problem.
Actually, I got one more for you, Mark. You just made me think of something. Have we reached out to you regarding our pilot bike share program?
I don't recall seeing anything on that, on our agendas as of yet, but.
Can we, can we reach out to Mark, the committee, when the time comes? Where is Christopher here? Okay, well, can we get word to Christopher and Mike Coste? All right, thank you.
Okay.
You wanna chime in, staff?
You're good. Go.
Hi, Mayor Lee.
Kathy.
Council. So I wasn't going to talk tonight, because I wanted to come here to be in support of the kids that were coming, because I think it's awesome just for kids that age to be involved. And I like what they're doing, and so I wanna also say, hopefully, something comes of that, because it's an easy fix, and I encourage them, so I'm really glad that they were here. And also, but now with the, there's been a lot of people talking, big display here. So, but I noticed that a lot of the people don't actually live in Elk Grove, so they probably don't vote in Elk Grove. I hope they're not voting in Elk Grove. So just as a leader of Nest, I hear a lot of people saying that, you know, they've reached out to Nest. I've had, just maybe Gary has reached out, and it's a busy time of year with graduations and everything, but other than that, we haven't had anybody reaching out to talk to us. So we are expanding, we have, you know, and if anybody doesn't know, Nest is neighbors ensuring sincere transparency. It's no longer Stone Lake, because we have outgrown Stone Lake. We are all over Elk Grove now. This is an Elk Grove issue. We're not anti-progress, we're not anti-hospital. We are anti-putting something where, in a place that it doesn't fit. And that would be anywhere in Elk Grove. So that is all I wanted to say, and we have a new website, too, which is EGnest.com. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our final speaker is Sonia Strong.
My name is Sonia Strong, and I have lived in Stone Lake since before it became a city. I moved into Stone Lake, actually in Elk Grove, since before it became a city. I've moved into Stone Lake in 2001, in a master-planned community. There was no hospital in sight. I'm not opposed to a hospital in Elk Grove, just not in Stone Lake. I think there are lots of other places around Elk Grove where a hospital could be built, and there could be lots of labor that can come in and build it there. But CNU does not believe, need to build a hospital in the Stone Lake area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. There are no additional speakers, so let's move to the next item.
The next item will be Section 6, our General Administration Information. If I may, City Manager, I just wanted to say thank you to all of our participants in the audience, sorry for the, and our apologies for the sound issues that we're having for our audience viewing at home. You might hear us being a little bit loud, because we're having a hard time hearing ourselves inside of the chamber. But thank you, everyone, for bearing through us with these technical difficulties on this item. I'll hand it over to City Manager Berman now.
Thank you, Jason. All right, good evening, members of the City Council, Mr. Mayor. I have a few remarks and comments to make, some projects and things happening around the city. First, I wanna start with our Police Chief Recruitment. Chief Noblet announced his retirement last month.
Hang on a second, Jason.
Yes.
If everyone could please go into the hallway and close the doors, so we don't have any background noise, if you wanna converse, thank you.
So as I was saying, Chief Noblet announced his retirement last month. The city has since retained the services of Ralph Anderson to conduct a nationwide recruitment to fill his shoes. We're starting and kicking off that process with a community meeting coming up on May 21st at 6:00 PM here in the City Council chambers. All members of the public are invited to provide input on the desired attributes of the next Police Chief for the city of Elk Grove. The recruiter will be here, leading the discussion and providing an opportunity to solicit that input. There will also be an online survey, once the job opens, for residents to continue to provide input through that process. So I look forward to getting that underway. Another police-related item, there are currently two vacancies on the Chief's Advisory Board, and so we're looking, the chief is looking for two additional members. You can visit the city's website to submit letters of interest or an application if you're interested in participating on the Chief's Advisory Board. As part of Capital Region Small Business Week, the Economic Development Department is hosting a free small-business startup forum this Friday at Laguna Town Hall. Registration and networking start at 9:30 AM, and the program will begin at 10:00 AM. The event will offer a panel discussion on business basics, including best practices for common startup issues. For details and register for the event, visit egstartupforum eventbrite.com. We also have an Old Town area community workshop coming in, coming up next Thursday at 6:00 PM at the School District's Boardroom to present an overview of the projects planned for the Old Town area. These projects include the Railroad Street Improvements, Old Town Plaza Phase 2 and Phase 3 improvements, and the Old Town Streetscape Phase 2 Project. Our Public Works Director mentioned Big Truck Day, so I won't go into that, but that is on Wednesday, May 22nd. City is gonna be hosting the first-ever city-sponsored community garage sale. City's recycling waste team will host this event on June 23rd at the Old Town Plaza. Residents can sign up online for a sales stall. More information, please visit the city's website. There's another open house coming up. For the Public Works Department, we'll have an open-house community meeting tomorrow, beginning at 6:00 PM at the Wacford Community Center for the Laguna Creek Trail and Brewsville Sidewalk Improvement Project. And then finally, everybody, have everybody save the date for Elk Grove Aquatic Center Grand Opening on May 25th. Gates open at 10:00 AM. The Aquatic Center will be free to residents that day. We suggest that you get there early. We expect to reach capacity pretty quickly, which is 1,500 people. So we're really excited. You saw the slideshow going before the meeting started, so it's really coming along, and swimmers are out there now, the swim teams are out there practicing and getting ready and participating in their season, so it's an exciting time. So, May 25th, 10:00 AM. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. This report is also available on the city's website.
Jason, have you gone down the slide yet?
I have not gone down the slide. I will.
I have a question. For the Police Chief Recruitment Community Meeting, will there be more than one opportunity to attend, or is that so far that's gonna be the only one?
Yeah, that'll be the only in-person one, but there's gonna be online opportunities.
Okay. Thank you.
And Jason, just to give you a heads-up, there have been members of the community who have called me asking ways in which they can participate to assist. So as we embark on this journey, I hope that you keep that in mind. Absolutely. Please invite them to the community meeting on 21st. Got it. Thank you. Questions? Nope? All right. All right, next item.
Dig us to Section 7, Council Comments, Reports, and Future Agenda Items.
Okay. Member who won?
Thank you, sir. I will make this quick in the interest of time. In addition to very many community events I attended to, the Unity Ball and Victus Foundation, I was also part of the District Attorney's Public Safety Community Luncheon, where I had the opportunity to hear our very own Chief of Police sit on the panel and speak about our department. He did an excellent job. I wish he was here so that I can tell him how well he represented not just our city, but our department as well, too. Councilmember Sun and I both participated in the Western Festival. We were able to do a number. You missed out this year, Vice Mayor.
Yeah.
And I thought we did okay. We did a dance throughout the parade. We also got a bunch of cowgirls to assist us in well, too, and I think they actually stole the show from us, I would say. And the goats are back, so if you're in town, they are now in my backyard along the creek, but they've moved along. It's been great to see them, but I'll tell ya, I'm looking forward to waking up and not hearing them early in the morning or late at night, but they're definitely fun to watch. This year, they have signs up to say, please don't feed them, because I think what was happening is many of the community members are going out there and bringing carrots, which they love, and feeding them, and I think we want them to clean our weeds back there. And so if you haven't had a chance, I think we have it on the website to let you know where they're at, to keep track, a tracker.
Goat Tracker.
Goat Tracker, yes. And I'd like to possibly talk about bringing the high school. I know we had Consumnis Oaks and Elk Grove High School talk a lot today about a presentation on EPS, and I'd like to get support on, if not on the 22nd, look at a future agenda where we can fit them in to give us a presentation on it.
Sure, I'd support that. The only question is, will we bring this back as a four-series item or something else other than that? Informative?
I think they wanted to make a presentation.
Yeah, just a presentation, not any, just a presentation. That's what I mean.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that, yeah. Okay, so good. We probably need to find a way to get ahold of them and let them know. I think they all left, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Sun.
Okay, we, or I, excuse me, attended our SECOG Policy and Innovation Committee meeting. meeting, um, Library Authority meeting, and then, uh, had an opportunity to, to speak at the recent Lakeside Homeowners Association. Um, tomorrow, I have Sacramento Transportation Authority, uh, with the Vice Mayor. And then, uh, recently, I was able to take as part of my role on SACOG, Sacramento Council of Governments. We've, uh, taken these study missions in the past couple of years, and one of the requests that I had made, and I'm sure others, uh, in, in a similar situation made the same, was that instead of looking at these urban communities that, that look, that look nice, we wanted to look at something that more mirrored our community. In other words, a suburban community. And, uh, in addition to that, um, it's always great to see the architecture and, and, you know, and talk about the planning, but I was always more interested in how can it actually get built? How can it get realized i- in our community? If, if you're looking at these places that have, these places, meaning these cities, these areas have, that have gone from suburban to urban, created these senses of place in a sustainable way. And so, what they found was, and I thought they did a great job, were parts of Montgomery County in, in Maryland. And so, that's where we went, um, last Friday. And it wa, it was even better because the elected official there was, uh, he was, he was with the, it was a county, but they called it a council, but he actually grew up in Oakland. So, he had the California, you know, mindset. He understood California. And then, secondly, the individuals there that represented, uh, the, the development company, uh, want, the same company developed Santana Row in San Jose, and this person, uh, was the general partner, uh, invent, in, on that project. And they, we actually, they brought him and his wife out to run, uh, a, a couple of projects out here. And so, I'll give you that backstory to, so that you can hear that there's, there's a lot of, uh, um, there's a lot of relevance in these, these folks' experiences and backgrounds. So, he moved out there four years ago. And so, but what we found was that, um, there was just, uh, the, the differences in, in our communities was more about the fee structures and the, the land values, underlying land values. And this, the company was, uh, in fact, it was a publicly traded real estate investment trust, um, federal realty trust. And so, they've owned these projects, projects, and they're, they're large projects, uh, for 30 years. So, they, they've been invested in the community for a very long time. So, I, I, I just took note of these, took stock of, of these things and thought I'd convey it to folks. I mean, there's, there's a lot of great things we see in communities, and we say, hey, what, you know, why can't we do something like that in Elk Grove? And, um, and there's, a lot of it has to do with, with the economics and the timing. And, uh, of course, the planning hasn't come into play, but there's, there's just some things that are out of a city's control. So, I, I was a very educational trip, and, uh, it's, um, anyway, I, I just wanted to bring that back and convey it to folks here. Thanks. And that's all I had. Oh, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, it'll be really short. Uh, no sandboard meeting this morning, and so, uh, didn't have that. I did have a meeting with the RT General Manager, and we're still working through the regional paratransit, uh, service, so we will see what comes of that, but it's a fluid item at this point, so I was a little premature to, uh, announce things the way that I did, uh, the last report out. Um, and then I was not able to attend the Western Festival this weekend and dance with my, uh, fellow council members because I was in Austin, uh, Texas, which, first of all, I was in the most incredible, uh, thunderstorm I've ever seen in my life, where literally the lightning and thunder happened almost simultaneously. It was amazing. And they have drainage, uh, their drain inlets are about four feet wide and probably 18 inches tall. And you wonder, you know, why that seems like overkill, and everywhere is these huge ditches into detention. But I'm telling you what, when they get rain, they gotta move water quick.
Yeah.
It's not an option of having, uh, you know, a little bit of buildup and watching it and keeping an eye on it. It's when it comes, it's gotta go.
Tendencies, yeah.
But why I bring that up is because, um, Austin very much uses the, uh, bike share and scooter, uh, as ways to get around, and I did participate and, and use the scooters, and they are super convenient and a great way of, uh, you know, if you gotta go a couple blocks or a couple miles, uh, easier than, than necessarily calling a ride share riding transit. However, as I've expressed in the past, the downfall of that is that they just get left everywhere. And in some cases, I mean, it's really a, I think, a little bit of a tripping hazard because they're just laying right there on the sidewalk. So, as we look, and I know that, uh, Council Member Sun, you're, you're a big into this and a big proponent, and I support it as an alternative mode of transportation, but we've got to start working with these companies before we allow them to come in and figure out how they are going to, uh, make them used in an orderly fashion, and, uh, whether it's a docked system or, uh, you know, um, I know at the UT campus, you have to leave it at a bicycle rack, or else it won't lock the, the scooter back up. And so, I know they have the technology, we just need to figure out how to use it, because they are super convenient and, but they also, I think, pose a aesthetic blight as well as a health hazard.
And that's why we're proceeding as a pilot, in a cautious way. Yeah.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Uh, always, uh, the majority of my report, the only thing I want to highlight is the Western Festival. Um, as, um, that was the, um, as I recollect into the first festival in which I participated, in which was the Western Festival, and I've seen it just kind of shrink. And, um, you know, it's raised some concerns, and I've had some conversations, uh, with, uh, board members and some of the volunteers out there, but there seems to be an interest, but, um, I'm not quite sure exactly what happened along the lines in terms of it, uh, shrinking to where it is. Uh, it could be for a number of reasons. Um, I think Ken earlier said that there's a lack of beer. Um, I think it's a little more than that. Probably Cinco de Mayo, uh, might be an issue for that weekend. Uh, but, um, you know, I mean, certainly for the greater community, uh, when they think of Elk Grove, they think of the Western Festival, and I think that's kind of the flagship, uh, festival. So, um, as we embark on, on this journey for next year's festival, um, you know, I'm, I would encourage, uh, council members to engage in that conversation with them as well, seeing ways in which we can help. So, all right, that's it. All right, next item.
Take us to Section 8, our consent calendar items.
Okay, uh, I see that, um, want to open for public comment. I see that one member of the public signed up to speak, Joe Winter. Actually, two. We have Joe Winter. Joe, you here. Mr. Winter, going once, twice. Warren Holt, come on up.
Good evening. I'm, uh, Warren Holt. I'm the President and CEO of Central Valley Engineering and Asphalt. Um, I'm here to speak on item 8.6. Uh, we submitted a bid for the citywide patch project, and I understand that the Foundation for Fair Contractors has sent some sort of an advisory recommending that they, that you do not award to us. Um, just a little background on the Foundation for Fair Contractors, they're, they are a fully-funded, uh, by the operating engineers local three. They are out strictly to keep non-union contractors out of the public works arena. They've been chasing me around for about 20 years now. I fight them every year. Um, in December of 2016, they submitted 26 cases to the Department of Industrial Relations, uh, with regards to my company. Most the Department of Industrial Relations has ever seen. Uh, 20 of them were dismissed without any errors. We had five of them that we did have errors. One resulted in a $23 payment discrepancy with an employee. I think we sent a letter to you guys on all this. One of them resulted in a $46, uh, mispayment. The majority of them were apprenticeship violations. I think we had four of those where we sent the letter. All the apprenticeship, uh, programs are located in San Ramon in one office, same address. Prior to those investigations, we were sending all of our DAS 140 and 142s to the same address in one envelope. That initiated four violations. So, we are now sending five envelopes to the five separate councils in the same building. So, that's been resolved. Um, biggest, the biggest issue I have is that these guys are very predatory on non-union contractors. I've done upwards of $8 million of work in the city of, uh, Elk Grove. Uh, one of, one of the other companies I work closely with, Sierra National Construction. Between the two of us, we do the majority of your concrete work here in town when it comes to handicap ramps. I've done the majority of the asphalt patch paving under your slurry program for the various slurry seal contractors, uh, Valley Slurry Seal, Intermountain Slurry Seal, APS, CPM. I even bid as a prime one year. I was a paving contractor on all of those. If you go back and look, you'll find no violations. Also, uh, run your $3 million citywide, um, overlay program before with no violations. So, what, I guess in, in a nutshell, the point is, this is a predatory union affiliate that is going after non-union contractors. Um, we in no way will stand down to them. That was interesting, listening to some of the apprentices back here. I'm like, uh, a couple of them were concerned about working in the Bay Area, and I'm like, geez, if you actually followed California state prevailing wage law, you'd have to get paid drive time to the Bay Area. But because the Foundation for Fair Contractors won't investigate union contractors, they don't pay drive time, prevailing wage drive time. So, in a nutshell, what we do is do it right. I have a CPA who does my payroll. I'm a registered professional engineer. I have a CPA CFO who actually reviews our payroll. You will find that we make next-to-no errors. We've had almost no violations compared to most of your union contractors you'll have in town. So, I just wanted to be here, answer any questions you might have of me, and put a face with the name.
Thank you, sir. All right, um, I do have some questions, but I probably want to direct it to staff, so thank you for your input. Um, all right. Seeing that there are no additional speakers, uh, want to close with public comment and council deliberation and direction.
Thank you. Go ahead. Um, I'd like to, uh, move, uh, the consent agenda, but I'd like to move, uh, 8.6 for further discussion, and then move the rest of the agenda, our consent items.
Okay. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose extension. All right.
Okay, 8.6. And I do appreciate you being here, Mr. Holt. It's good to know. Um, so, I, I'd just like to get a little bit more information on, on this violation and, and then follow-up on the second question is, I, I, I've heard this, it sounds like Mr. Holt's company's in a lot of business in the city, but this seems, appears to be the first time we're getting complaint about it. Is that accurate, or?
I don't recall receiving a letter, uh, again, for, you know, related to his company. I think we've received a couple of letters like this related to other contractors. Um, it's not very common, but it does happen.
Okay. And so, maybe you could elaborate a little bit on what the, uh, I saw the FFC, the FFC, um, violation?
Well, I think, and they make some general statements about the, you know, Central Valley, you know, not following prevailing wage or apprenticeship requirements, but they don't get into specifics about it. So, what we've done is we've reached out to the Department of Industrial Relations to try to get as much information as we can. I mean, Central Valley, in their pre-qualification package, did note that they had a couple of violations related to apprenticeship and, and prevailing wage. And so, they were in their, in their pre-qualification package, they were straightforward about that. Um, and so, that doesn't disqualify them. It, it deducts points off of, of, uh, of their score, but with everything else they had, they met the minimum score, and they are pre-qualified to bid on, on city contracts. So, um, we're still, uh, DIR said it would take probably about 10 days, a little bit, maybe not quite that many days, to get the specifics to us. Um, so, we don't really have anything other than what Central Valley has self-reported and, uh, and the, and what DIR has said that they would give to us. We just have some general information at this moment.
So, we know there's a viol, there are a couple violations, we just don't know the details of.
Right. And the details we have is, was so far is, is the letter from Central Valley detailing, from their perspective, what those violations were. So, that's, that's really the extent of the information we have now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Murdoch, are we under a time constraint to, to get this, uh, done with and move it forward, or?
No, but what this contract does is it, it does all of the base failure repairs. Uh, the, the, uh, regular resurfacing program is out to bid right now, and the idea is, we bring in a contractor, they do all the base failure repairs, and in, in, in behind them comes another contractor, and they go and do the asphalt work. And what that does is, that lets the follow-on contractor be able to come in and get out quickly without having to wait to do base failure repairs and everything else. So, we find it's much more cost-effective to bid these separately. Um, and I think you can see by the bids, uh, we got a couple of very good bids on, on this work. So, could we delay it two weeks? Would it hurt anything? No. Um, beyond that, we'd have to take a look at it, because if we ended up doing something else, uh, I don't know, because it would, it would push out a resurfacing program. And if it takes long enough, it could push us in, into next spring.
Yeah, and it, 10 days, I mean, it doesn't seem like it's a long time.
We could, we could, you know, push it out to May 22nd. By then, based on DIR, they will have given us the information, uh, specific to Central Valley, and we certainly can share that.
Okay. Yeah. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I, I had the opportunity to read the email from where city staff was requesting clarification, and then I saw Mr. Holt's letter providing that clarification. But I want to go back to something that you just, I think I heard you say, and that is that, um, if these, uh, for lack of a better word, I'll call them allegations or, or, or discrepancies are found to be true, uh, that would result in, in a loss of points, but not necessarily a disqualification. And even with those loss of points, they still would have scored higher than the next lowest bidder? They wouldn't have scored higher, but both of them passed. Both of them achieved enough scores in our pre-qualification to be allowed to bid. I see. So, this would have applied to the pre-qualification only. Yes, yes. And then at that point, it's a level playing field to where now it's the lowest responsible bidder. Yes. Okay. I believe. So then, I'm curious, what are we hoping to find out? Well. I don't know.
Now, I, I'm, I just want to, now I want to clarify.
Yeah.
So, so the, the allegations, the details that we're talking about are already calculated in, the details of the allegations of, of the, of what we're researching at DIR are already, were, were factored in the pre-qualification process, not, not subsequent.
Well, the allegations are very general. They don't, they don't speak how many instances under the apprenticeship or prevailing wage. The details that we have are from the contractor who, in his pre-qualification package, noted two violations in a, in, in his pre-qualification package, and that was taken into account in how he was scored, and he still passed. So, what we're doing now is simply saying, going back to DIR, saying, okay, what do you have for Central Valley? Because our pre-qualification package, for, for example, says, have you had any violations of prevailing wage over the last five years? And Central Valley noted two violations. Um, that, that ended up resulting in some deduction of points. It doesn't disqualify them automatically. Um, and quite frankly, it's not that unusual for a contractor to have, you know, made a mistake. And the question, we go to DIR is, okay, a contractor has said they've had two, two issues with, um, with prevailing wage over the last five years. What records do you have, uh, related to prevailing wage in Central Valley? Assuming Central Valley has self-reported and is accurate, we'll, you know, when we get from DIR, we'll find out.
Mayor, members of the council, I might be able to illuminate this a little bit. I think we're probably talking about a couple of different things here. What Mr. Murdoch is talking about is the pre-qualification process. That's a checklist where we determine whether or not the contractor has attained a sufficient number of points to be able to bid on the project. This contractor has. He did report, the company did, did report that they had two violations, prevailing wage violations in the last five years. And we've heard from the contractor's representative himself that that's true. We have some details from his reporting on those issues. So, that gets him to pre-qualification so that they can bid on the project. What we're discussing now is a notion of whether or not the contractor is non-responsible, whether or not they are, for lack of a better term, not competent to perform the work. When we review public works bids, as the council knows, we have to accept the lowest responsive responsible bidder. So, responsiveness is determined simply by looking at the face of the bid documents. Did the contract, excuse me, did the bid documents identify the project for the lowest price? Can they do it? We look at the face of the document itself. It's a fairly rote mathematical exercise. Responsibility goes to their ability to perform the work, and I'll just kind of identify some of the elements of the statute that go to responsibility. It, it's a decision as to whether or not the bidder, the contractor, has the attributes of trustworthiness, quality of work, fitness, capacity, and the experience to satisfactorily perform the work. It's a bit more subjective. But because of that, if a city is going to declare a contractor non-responsible, in other words, not competent to do the work because of whatever factor we assign, they're entitled to due process because it impinges their reputation as a contractor. So, we have to give them that due process, let them know that we are going down the path to declare them not responsible, and give them notice and an opportunity to be heard, generally through an administrative hearing process, that can be done at a staff level, where they have the opportunity to explain why they in fact are competent and trustworthy and can do the work for the quality that we're looking for. It's a relatively higher standard than simply looking to see whether or not the bid is low or not, or whether or not they've identified all the work. So, that's a little bit different than the pre-qualification. The pre-qualification just gets them to be able to The pre-qualification just gets them to be able to bid. Now, even with the pre-qualification numbers, this bidder still qualifies. They took a hit on some of the points because they identified some prevailing wage violations, but that does not categorically disqualify them from bidding. So, right now, from staff's perspective, including mine, it appears to us, based on the information that we have, that this contractor is the lowest responsive responsible bidder. If there are new facts, if there's new information that we can consider, that's fine. We can look at that, but the bidder gets an opportunity to essentially refute those claims and explain why they either don't have merit, maybe they're incorrect, or maybe they're explainable away. And he's done that a little bit tonight. So it's a little bit of a process to get to that point. I hope that helps a little bit.
A little bit. So I just want to clarify, because we're, I mean, I guess, so what we're talking about is these, the information that we've requested from the Department of Industrial Relations on details of these violations, but what I'm hearing you say, based on what their criteria of disputing responsible bidder, that the details that would come back, doesn't sound like it would, it would put us in this, make it possible to declare...
Well, it's a difficult thing to know without knowing the details, and I can sort of forecast what I think we're probably going to see, and we'll get the information and know for sure, but what I think it's going to probably show is that, sure, there were some discrepancies with this contractor over the years. He's acknowledged some of those already and has ended up paying some fines as a result of that. That, in my opinion, generally, on those facts alone, does not necessarily lead to a level of non-responsibility. Now, if there was, and I'm not suggesting this is the case, but if there was some form of fraud, if there was some dishonesty, if there was some other attributes that bear upon the reputation of the company, then we might have a different situation. I don't know that we're going to see that or not. My suspicion, and it's only suspicion, is we probably won't, because we tend to not see things like that. But it's possible. But I don't know, without knowing the details of what the DIR provides us, the contractor has given us some of that information tonight, some of the details, he's essentially self-reported, some of the, some of the concerns he's had over the years. And I take that at face value, but we can certainly confirm that. I think what we're going to get from the DIR, hopefully, is something very similar to what we've already heard tonight. And if we do, I'm not sure we're going to be in position as a city council, or you as a city council, as a city staff, to be able to declare on those facts, this contractor as a non-responsible contractor.
Okay, thank you.
My biggest struggle is if I don't have the whole complete picture, it's difficult for me to move forward. And so, what I'm hearing from you, Mr. Murdoch, is that 10-day delay is not going to be a significant difference. I would be in favor of delaying this until the next meeting, kicking it down the road.
I'm sorry, can I, Jim, and so I think we heard Mr. Hobbs say that we, he doesn't, he does, assuming whatever comes back with this report, we still don't have the ability to decline this?
It really depends. I mean, again, I haven't seen the material yet, so I don't know. I'm speculating, I admit.
As to what I think I'm probably going to see, but we don't know. Again, if something comes back that is, you know, alarming to us, some form of, you know, intentional dishonesty, something like that, and again, I'm not suggesting that's the case, but just by way of example, we might have something there. So it's a little bit difficult for me to forecast that without knowing what we're going to see. I'm simply speculating as to what I think we're probably going to see.
Okay. Okay.
Okay?
So I guess, you know, I guess if I, if I had to guess, it sounds like what you were saying, Mr. Hobbs, but I, to err on the side of caution, and when there's no, if there's no time issue, let's just wait, get the information, and we'll come back. I, I do want to make sure that, you know, anybody who does business in our city knows that we expect things to be done by the book, and so I think this would just reinforce that. And, Mr. Holt, you apologize if this is going to delay you a little bit, but hopefully things will come back and everything will work out fine, and everybody can move forward on, on business, so. That would be my, that would be my suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, as, as a matter of erring and caution, you have to understand where we're coming from. We want to make sure that we have everything on the table, and it may not impact you, but I think more importantly, we want to hear from DIR, and, you know, once at that point, we can move forward. Mr. Hobbs, do we need a vote on this, or can we just kick it down?
Yes, please. If we could do a vote, it sounds like you want to move this to the next council meeting, which would be the 22nd.
Okay.
If we have a motion second, a vote on that, please.
Okay, got a motion to move this to the 22nd meeting. I'll move it. Got a second?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, all right? Next item.
Section nine, our public hearings, and that is one item, which is 9.1, a public hearing to consider a resolution approving the 2019-20 action plan and authorizing the city manager to execute and file all documents required, receive U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Community Development Block Grant Funds.
Good evening, council members. My name is Alicia Tutt, and I am the Housing and Grant Specialist. Sarah Bontrager is returning from cap to cap tonight, so I get the pleasure of presenting. Tonight I have a before you approval of our annual action plan for the Community Development Block Grant. I have a brief presentation, and then I'm happy to answer any questions. So the action plan serves as the annual budget and implementing document for the program. It includes identified goals, projects, and funding for the CDBG fiscal year. The process is, back in January, we solicited applications, January 18th through February 22nd, and then brought those staff recommendations to the council on March 27th, where we held a public hearing and received your input on those. And then, the document itself was open for public review for 30 days starting April 8th, and after approval of the action plan, we will submit it to HUD. As part of the action plan, we had two capital projects that were identified in the funding, and seven public service projects that were identified in the funding that were discussed again on the March 27th meeting. The final CDBG allocations have been released. They're slightly lower than what we had expected. We are receiving 920,000, almost 921,000 in new funds. We also have approximately 28,000 in program income from fiscal year, from our current fiscal year that we received. So that balances out to slightly less than the 950,000 we had estimated. We are able to make minor administrative budget adjustments, as well as include some funding that may not be spent in this fiscal year, so that we don't have to make any changes to any of the budgets or any of the activity budgets that were planned. So we're able to make that hole to the 950 that we had anticipated. The next steps are for us to make those adjustments, and then submit the approved action plan to HUD, enter into contract with grantees, and then the funding year will begin July 1st. Any questions?
Any questions? Nope, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and open the public comment, or declare the public hearing open, open the public comment opportunity. We have two people signed up to speak, Jennifer Mosello and Michelle Bustamante.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, and council members. I'm Jennifer Mosello, and Mrs. Michelle Bustamante, we're from the Mills and Fields by ACC.
Could you speak up, please? No, there's no mic.
Thank you.
I think I can speak up a little. I might speak up a little.
Okay. We wanted to express our gratitude for the funding recommendation, for the continued support of the city council and staff. Your support has helped us serve 18,205 meals to 243 seniors in the city of Elk Grove this fiscal year. With three months remaining on this year's grants, we're well on our way to our goal of serving 246 seniors with 20,200 meals.
So our big opportunity for growth this year is the transition, transitioning our program from the Elk Grove Senior Center to Light of the Valley Church. And we might possibly also be moving into the Vintage at Laguna Senior Apartments community as well. So we look forward to continuing to build our volunteer engagement, welcoming new and current seniors to our new locations, and developing new community partnerships that will help us identify seniors who can benefit from our programs. Thank you again for this funding recommendation and your continued support. This enables us to help more seniors in the city of Elk Grove to eat well and age well. Thank you very much for your help on this.
Thank you for being here.
All right. Seeing that there are no additional speakers, want to close public comment, declare a public hearing closed. Council deliberation and direction.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, next item.
That'll take us to section 10, our regular agenda action items and recommendations. And that one item is 10.1, to receive an overview of the proposed fiscal year's 2019-2024 capital improvement program and provide direction as appropriate.
Doesn't matter how close you lean, Kevin.
I was like, good evening, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm here to present the draft of the proposed fiscal year 2019-2024 capital improvement program. Before I get into that, I want to talk a little bit about our accomplishments that we've had this year. So we've awarded, we're planning to award 30 projects that exceeds our, our goal of 17, exceeds last year's, last year's total of 28. So we're rewarding more projects this year than we did last year. We also got seven grants, about $8.87 million. We had a goal of about $5 million, so we exceeded that. I remember last year, Mr. Hymn questioned, are you going to get the $4 million you're asking for, for the Old Town Streetscape Phase Two project? And yes, we did, so it's great. Another one we wanted to highlight, too, is we got this $800,000 for ITS 5A, so we're excited about that project.
Yeah, good job.
We also have Jeff Warner's here. I'm going to highlight a bunch of Jeff's, you know, he's a Division Manager for Engineering Services, and a lot of these pictures came from him. So, this is the Lower Laguna Creek Trail project. This is actually from yesterday, so we're out there paving that trail right now, so adjacent to Laguna Creek. Really excited about that project. This is our green bike lane project, pilot project, that's been, that was completed last, last calendar year, but this fiscal year. This is the Emerald Vista Drive Storm Drain Project on the left. That was a upsizing of the existing storm drain system. We've got the canine training facility. That, that was a picture of a, of a canine top of a bobcat, so just thought that would be fun. That actually is, project is nearly completed. And then this is the SWAC unloading area, which is covered, essentially covers up our loading, our bins, in a, in a special waste collection area, so you don't get water in those bins, so that was the intent of that project. And then we had a variety of transportation projects. Here's the Sheldon Bradshaw Roundabout, as completed, the Waterman Road pavement rehabilitation project. And then we also have the new growth area projects, building in Big Horn, that should be coming back to council for a notice of completion, that's pretty much done. And then the lift station has already been completed. So, that's a kind of, just a quick overview of what we've done this, this fiscal year. So, now I'm going to talk a little bit about the next five years as far as the capital improvement program. So, we have a variety of potential projects that are generated from different sources. General plan, other planning documents, fee programs, operational safety maintenance needs, city council direction, input from stakeholders, the public. And then we have to take that, those requested projects, and then really look at those and see what are the, what are the projected revenue? How much fund, funding do we have for the next five years? And then, also, a lot of those funds are restricted, so drainage can only be used for drainage, and roadway fee can only be used for roadway, so we have to look at that, and there's very little discretionary funding. So, we have to line up the potential projects with the funding, and then also we have to account for available staff resources, make sure we can line up. That's kind of generally what goes into the capital improvement program, how it gets developed. The capital improvement program, we've been simplifying it, it's got five programs in it, so it's alternative transportation modes, which is bike ped transit, community enhancement, which is landscaping, lighting, plaza, and parks. We've got drainage, flood control, stormwater, quality of facilities, our facilities, just like this building, the building across the street, animal shelter. And then transportation is all our typical transportation projects, pavement rehab, traffic control, traditional transportation projects. This year, we've kind of simplified the, a little more, because we have some projects that we have in prior years, and we have that broken out as own section. So, those are projects that are getting no new money in the next five years, but have some money from prior years that we're continuing to work on. That's its own little section of projects. And then we also have the, we do have studies and minor per, public works projects, they're not quite part of the CIP itself, but we just want to, that is something that we include as part of it, as an attachment. This year, we did a little more outreach than we have done in prior years, so we had a budget workshop that we did in October, that was primarily focused on the budget side, and we did have a little bit about capital programming on trails as a, as a game to do that. And then, we also had surveys done for cycling, walking, and traffic. So we had over 200 participants on this survey, where you filled out a form, and then you could also provide input on a GIS map. So this first map you're seeing is cycling, and then the second map is walking, and then this third map is traffic. So we can use that information as we get through, later, as we get through the next cycle, we can use it. We also used it for this cycle of the CIP, so I'm going to talk quickly about the cycling survey. So for the cycling survey, what we heard was, you know, east-west arterial roads, bike lane improvements were needed, so that's going to be added as part, that's this proposed CIP. The other thing we were asked to look at was, more from a bicycle pedestrian trails master plan update standpoint, is buffered bike lanes and cycle tracks, and then also everybody really wants improved access to Old Town, so that's another one we'll focus on. And then on the walking survey, we added one project, which is the Teagan Road Sidewalk Infill Project. And then on that one as well, the bicycle pedestrian trails master plan, they want to focus on pedestrian crossings and metered intersections, so we can take a really good look at that, and then access to Old Town. And then on traffic, we got a lot of feedback about Elk Grove Boulevard, Laguna, and Bond, and really looking at the coordination on that, and so that is a CIP project we're working on currently.
Hey, Kevin, just real quick, so I saw that, and then looking at your flyer here, you noted that the two top commute routes, 9995, people didn't focus on the commute being a problem, they're focused more on the internal traffic?
Yeah, primarily east-west. The east-west connectivity is really where we saw it.
Okay, oh, just interesting, thanks.
Yeah, getting across town is really the, seems to be the issue.
Yeah.
So this is the, kind of a big picture overview of the five-year program, reflects the city's capital project priorities. It's, the first year is going to be part of the annual budget, and then the remaining years are really forecasts. So we have about 190 million in the next five years. Well, a very little bit of that is discretionary, about 5.6 million, and then we have about 137 of restricted funds, which is, can only be used for a certain purpose. And then there's a portion of it's unfunded, and those are portions where we believe we have a good chance of getting grant funding, or there may be funding that we're trying, we, it's a possibility that we could use local funding, we just haven't identified the specific source for it at this time. There's 93 projects, 15 of those are new, were in the prior year, and there are 37 projects that are active from prior years that we're continuing to work on. They may be in construction, but they have not complete, been completed yet. So this is the alternative transportation modes, it's about 18 million, it's over 18 million, 22 projects. About 12 million of that is in, in funding we, we should have in the next five years, and then the other little bit of that is unfunded, and that's primarily related to grants that we're looking at pursuing, getting positioned for grants. So we removed a couple, Strawberry Creek Trail, we had pursued a grant for that project, and it was fairly unsuccessful, and they asked us to re-scope that out, Secog did. And so we'll be looking at that again as part of the master plan update, and we'll add it back in when we feel it's in a good position to add. These are the projects we, the new projects we've added. I'll note, anything that's underlying this presentation is because it's tied to grants. So, Teagan Road, we were trying, we're looking at potentially getting a CDBG funding for that. Laguna Creek Trail, that Laguna Creek Trail pedestrian crossing, we did get grant funding for that. The bike lane project east-west, on the east-west arterial is the one I talked about earlier, we already have funding for that. And then, the only real new minor project we have is Laguna Creek Trail Master Plan, I'm going to talk about that in a second. So this is the Laguna Creek Trail Master Plan that we've, we've submitted a grant for that, for the Caltrans Sustainable Communities Grant. And what we would like to do is, we would like to develop a master plan for Laguna Creek. The Laguna Creek Trail is viewed as the number one priority for the Trails Committee. It is the backbone trail network for the entire city. Once, as we, when we complete that trail system, you'll be able to, you'll have nine miles of trail going east-west across the entire city. You'll have access to the, you'll see there's green and purple dots, the green dots are the transit stations, and the purple dot is that future passenger rail station that SJJPA is working on now. So you could literally be in Sheldon and bike up to... So you could literally be in Sheldon and bike up to, um, you know, an RT station and go down to see a Kings game. That, that's kind of the vision. The dash red lines are tho, those areas that we're, still have gaps that we're trying to in, fill in. But if we can get this grant, we're hoping to find out next week, I feel like it's a really, really great project for us to, to work on, and will help us position for future grant opportunities. Uh, so this is Community Enhancement, this is the next program, there's about, uh, total of twenty-eight million, half of that is funded, and the other half is not funded. Um, that's also projects we're looking to get some grant funding for, have some local funding that we're, we're looking at using. And there's eleven projects. The one I, uh, we, as far as remove projects are, when I say remove, most, most of these projects are moved to a future, future needs list, it's not actually removed, but. So Tuscan Neighborhood Park is a project that was removed. We don't have that, that property has not been dedicated to the city, we can't really do anything with right now, so that's been moved. We have a, uh, we programmed the Oasis Park Community Building, um, because Oasis Park's being constructed, doesn't have the community building component, um, so that's getting added, as a separate project. The one project we want to focus on, on this, is the Old Town Plaza. So the, currently Old Town Plaza is funded for Phase Two only, which is this yellow highlighted area. And so, we're looking at this, we're doing the Phase Two design, and we're doing this Phase Three design, which is in green, at least to a schematic design level, to get a better idea of the cost estimate. There's a possibility that we could determine that parts of this Phase Three should really go into Phase Two and you build more of it. But that's something that you'll see coming back to you guys, um, in, uh, as part of a environmental document that's going to be, we're updating for this project, and probably as future, other future council action. Just want you to be aware of that. Drainage is fifteen million, it's a fully funded program, um, there's about eleven projects in it. New projects, really is, the Shed A, we're, uh, doing some slope stabilization in that, um, as well as we have the, some gate valves we're looking at replacing in Laguna West. And then, um, we have some drainage enhancements that, that's a minor project over by Laguna Creek near State Route ninety-nine. Facilities, so, see, it's one of our smaller programs, three point three million dollars, sixteen projects. Most of those projects are related to replacing flooring, replacing roofing, replacing HVAC systems. Most of our, most of the buildings we currently own were constructed in about over twenty years ago, and we're starting to get to the end of useful life, that's why a lot of projects in that area. We did have a civic center and library schematic design, we do no longer plan on working on that, um, just not, not, not enough funding for that right now. We did add eighty upgrades at city facilities, that's a project we want to, um, we'd like to do, um, we would be trying to pursue CDBG funds for that in the future. And then we have an EV charging station upgrade at city facilities, and a remodeled Iron Rock Way. Transportation, so transportation is our biggest program, um, there's a hundred, almost a hundred and twenty-five million dollars in that program. A hundred, about a hundred million of that is funded, and the other twenty-six point one million is, is grant funding we're looking for, and I'll talk about that in a minute. There's thirty-three projects. One project we eliminated was the Grantland Road Operational Improvements. Really, we have this Grantland Road Sheldonary Precise Plan, we want to complete that first, before we program this project, make sure we know what that project's going to be, before we type, try to start programming any improvements. That's why we pulled that off and put it on a future needs list. All these new projects listed are all grant-related, so the new projects, those are all grant funding, we got through either SAICOG or HCP. And then, we have a variety of new projects that were taken into thirty-five percent design only. So the intent with those projects is, when we pursue SAICOG grant funding in the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four funding round, we've got this, these, these sets of projects that we're developing to get ready to, to submit. I've got those projects on this map, you can see the I's, items in red, those are the projects that we're kind of targeting for future grant rounds. Make, we feel like those are the most competitive, at least right now. So minor projects, um, we have the flashing yellow demonstration project. I wish Councilman Detrick was here to, to see that we had this here, but we have it, because he's been asking for it, so it's part of, part of the program. Um, we have East-West Corridor Performance Management, that's also trying to improve that East-West Corridor performance, it's another minor project we have. Old Town Elk Grove Intersection Study, which you'll probably, that'll be coming back to council here, and if you, in a, in a couple council meetings, and then we have a grade separation study that we're, we're looking at. So big picture, Cammer Road, one of the more important projects for the city, um, what we, I want to lay out where we're at, what we can do in the next five years, what we think we can do based on projected revenue. So, Big Horn to Lots, we anticipating constructing that by twenty twenty. Bruceville to Big Horn, construction by twenty twenty-one. Things may work out, we may be able to combine those and just build it all at once, um, but we'll, we'll see. And then we'll end, and then we'll get IFI to Bruceville completely shovel-ready, and that, we'll need that twenty-six point one million in grant funding to construct that portion. Now, this is the two-lane facility, so it would be a divided two-lane facility with, um, standard, standard lane, standard lanes, widths, and shoulders. That would be what that is. So, essentially the blue and yellow by twenty twenty-one, everything shovel-ready in red, but, in the, right after that. Sean is going to talk about pavement management, and all the great things that we're doing.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Um, so I'm here to discuss some changes in the upcoming five-year pavement management program, which is funded through both capital and operational budgets. As has been presented previously, the city has roughly a twelve point one million dollar annual need to maintain our current PCI. Uh, in previous years, uh, prior to this, uh, we were only budgeting in the range of about three to four million dollars annually for that. This year, with the help of SB one, we were able to increase that to six point two. As we look forward in the next five years, uh, we actually are, uh, estimating that we're going to be close to nine point eight million annually spent on pavement, which reduces our shortfall to two point three from the eight million we had just two years ago. With, this has basically been done in a couple of different ways. I've got a chart here that kind of breaks it up between the three main categories. We have dedicated funds, which are your SB one, Measure A, your street maintenance zones. We have our grants, which are our debt, um, come from the CIP, and then we're estimating future grants, which, um, well, the value doesn't show up on there, but it's a million dollars annually. This is based off of historical averages that we have received. So totally, altogether, we expect to receive about nine point eight million per year that we'll be spending on pavement. What this means is that, at the end of the five years, uh, we will have a, an average PCI for the city of seventy-two, which, if we go back to where we were at four million, we'd be at sixty-three. So it's a nine-point jump, just with some changes that we've made, um, operational with efficiencies. We've been able to shift more money into our, from our dedicated funds towards pavement maintenance, which is going to really help keep the streets in a better condition, uh, for a lot longer. We hope to slowly creep towards that twelve million dollar need. Of course, the city is growing, so that need will increase as well, but we will work hard to try to close that gap as we move forward. And that is it. So, we're happy to answer any questions.
Great job.
Any questions? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Kevin, I, just a couple of questions. Uh, one of the, uh, slides you called out, citywide railroad grade separation, I believe is a study?
Yes.
Talk to me a little bit about that.
So essentially, there was a study done, I believe in-
The microphones still don't work.
Oh. It's like tricking me here. So there was a study that was already done, it was, I think in, I want to say like two thousand and four. And so, we want to essentially update that study and look at it, and look at it from a, not just a safety component, but a traffic operational component as well. Because there may be some key, um, locations where it would make sense just from an operational standpoint. So that's really what we, what the, what the intent is with that. So, and it's just, it's just a study. We don't want, we wouldn't want to, uh, we want to update that, and if, if we needed to preserve that space for that in the future, we'd like to preserve that. So we don't want to miss out, miss out on opportunities, that's really the intent.
Okay. I'll, I'll take credit for this. This was something I wanted to do. We have a number of ad-grade, uh, railroad crossings on the east side of town, Calvine, Bond. And so, if you really want to be able to do grade separations at those locations, you need to start really looking at them, prioritizing, deciding which ones you want to do first. If you look out ten to fifteen years, if you want to be in a position of having built those, you need to start now. And so, we're not talking about the one on, on Elk Grove Boulevard, we're talking about the ones north of that, that might be doable. And so, we want to start that process now of looking at them, maybe talking to the county about partnering on Calvine, and, and trying to decide which ones are the most viable, and setting ourselves up to, um, get grant funding, and to be able to, um, work our way through those if we can, and ultimately, have grade separations like we do on the west side of town, at the UP tracks over Laguna and, uh, and Elk Grove Boulevard. Great. Okay, thank you. And then, uh, my next question is one simply out of curiosity, because I want to know if it's how your mind works versus how my mind works, or what. But, on the, uh, the slide that you showed, the, the phasing of construction for Cammer Road?
Yeah.
On the picture, the construction would move from the right-hand side, working its way out to the left. And on each of the segments, you start with the street that's on the left-hand side going back to the right, and then jump to the street from the left-hand side going back to the right. And so I'm just curious, how do you eat your corn on the cob?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, I'm used to, uh, I'm a, so I have a lot of experience in geometric design, you always start your stationing left to right. And so, you always start, your roadway alignment is stationed left to right. So I'm used to all projects starting from, from on the, basically, the west side going to the east side, going to the south side, going to the north side. So, for some reason, that's not how we've been naming our projects or doing our projects, but that's how most people do projects, is they, everything kind of, everything goes that way. So, I mean, it is kind of the opposite here, but that, that's just the way it is.
So even though the road would be growing from right to left, it's kind of an engineer convention that you start from the, okay?
Yeah.
Right, I got you, Kevin.
You got me, Darren.
Figures it's an easier thing.
Darren's got me.
One, two, three, four. Turn it upside down.
Just to be clear, that would be very, what we have is, we have enough money to build to Bruceville, and we have enough money to get the rest of it shovel-ready. So that's the bottom line, in the CIP, we have the money to do this. And so, this isn't a hopeful schedule, as if we get grants, we will build that and get it shovel-ready with the money we have. And I think once we get, once we get Cammer, or the rest of Cammer shovel-ready, I think it'll be very competitive for the larger federal grants.
Hallelujah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Nope. No questions, thank you. Okay, at this time, want to open for public comment, I have one, uh, member of the public sign up to speak, Mark Doty.
I won't bother talking into the microphones. Uh, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, thank you again. I was just reading the agenda, I'm a nerd, and I read city council agendas, and I saw there's a bunch of stuff related to trails on the CIP, so I came down, since I had time. So, um, in, in the staff report, there was, uh, some interesting stuff with the cycling survey and the walking surveys, and, and it's, it's clear that the citizens, not just me on the Trails Committee, but we're interested in completing the Laguna Creek Trail. That's been my priority since day one on the, on the Trails Committee, is like, this needs to get done, then you, you do projects off of that, teeing off of it, and so on. But to get a backbone of a, of a trail network, you know, Laguna, or Laguna Creek, you can get from Franklin all the way to Bradshaw Road, with minimal amount of crossings, there's a few, too many in my opinion, but, um, they're already existing, and we're not going to change those, uh, anytime soon. So, uh, just delighted to see that in the CIP, that there's a lot of, of projects related to that. Since I was here, I was going to touch on a, a couple other things. Uh, one is the access to Old Town via bike, it is pretty tre- treacherous. There was the Bike and Bite, Bike and Bite last Monday. My wife rode down there with all five of my children, and, uh, it's a nightmare going down Elk Grove Boulevard. They survived, but, uh, my youngest is five now, so, um, you know, he's up on the sidewalk, which he really shouldn't be, but there's, you're not going to ride with a five-year-old in the lanes on Elk Grove Boulevard. And we're on the east side of town, so we're coming from like Waterman Road. So that needs to be improved, and, and it's in there as well, um, in the CIP, which is great. And, uh, and I'll remind you that there is still the possible access point along one of the forks of Elk Grove Creek underneath the railroad tracks, south of the railroad property, the city's property there. There's a, a fork, a very small fork of Elk Grove Creek that connects into the, the neighborhood by, off of Liz Moore and Markoffer Elementary School. That's on the radar on the, uh, Trails Committee to, to get underneath the railroad tracks there. That's a, um, maybe a down-the-line type project, but, um, it's a, it'll be another way to access Old Town, especially if we build, you know, build what we're trying to do in Old Town, and it's a real destination. Man, I made the mistake of driving through Old Town at ten o'clock when the Brew Fest was over, and I was like, where did all these people come from? I mean, there, there's a, a clamoring for people to get Old Town, to Old Town when there's events and so on. And, uh, anyway, so, um, just wanted to say that. And, uh, real quickly, um, Cammer Road, I love the project, because I, you know, driving east and west is a big deal, uh, like Kevin said, across town.
Sorry, Mark, your three minutes is up.
Yeah, I'm sorry, uh, just real quick, and then, there's just too many lights. There, there's a lot of lights that are being planned on that. And then, uh, just finally, I loved riding scooters in Nashville. They were a blast, and we didn't take an Uber and kept the car off a road, so, thank you.
Appreciate it. There are no additional, uh, members of the public sign up to speak, want to close public comment, counsel deliberation and direction.
I did have, uh, just one more question. Kevin, you mentioned that during the discussion on the CIP, you'd address my question about painting wayfinding for cyclists on the roads. And I think that would help, uh, with the Old Town access, because on the south side, uh, you have Grove Street, and on the north side, you have Second Avenue, that if you got people off of Elk Grove Boulevard, it's much safer, uh, than, than going down Elk Grove Boulevard directly. But they don't know it's there if they're not familiar with the area.
So, we do have a project, uh, that the Trails Committee had, has been asking us to do, it's called the, um, it's called the Exercise Route Project, and it's, you know, you mentioned the PB pathway? It's exactly that.
Okay.
Sort of to have that put in place, we, we do need some infrastructure completed. We're focusing on a pilot route that's in the Old Town area, kind of that, in that overall Old Town area. And we would, we are going to use, we are going to solve buffered bike lanes with the Old Town Streetscape project. So we kind of want to use that, and then brand it with the, you know, with our, essentially our own version of that. So that, that's kind of the plan. So I anticipate after we get Old Town Streetscape is when we'll try to implement that project. So I'd really like to use the buffered bike lanes that we're doing with Old Town Streetscape. But yeah, we are, we have that, it's, it's programmed currently, so.
Great.
Kevin, don't go, I got another question for you. So I, I, not question, but, uh, wanted to comment. I, I agree with, uh, Mark, I mean, we think we, in terms of Cammer Road, I think we talked about trying to find a way to see if where, where we were roundabouts or something might fit. I think there's too many signals on that thing. I think we're designing it for a two thousand, you know, twentieth-century type of road. Have you guys had it? I know we got to complete the-
That, that road's like six miles long, so you're seeing it like this, and you're seeing all these things, it looks worse, it probably looks worse than it is. I mean, from an operational standpoint, we're not seeing any, it's level Service A across that whole thing. It looks really good operationally right now, so, um, but I can talk to you about the roundabouts.
Yeah.
Later, if you want, I don't, I, I, we think we looked into that, but we could talk about it more.
Okay, that's fine, thanks.
I'll, I'll also say that we're building into that, and the city's being diligent as far as with land use to, uh, I think Big Horn is where it would start to be planned for future grade separation.
That's great.
So there'd be interim street light, but then Big Horn, Bruceville, and then no lights from Bruceville all the way out to Franklin.
Okay. Okay.
That's great.
That's good to know. Thanks.
Okay. All right. Receiving file, members? We're good to go? All right?
Good job.
Yeah, good job.
Okay. Well done. This is during this meeting at nine oh six.